I could call this April 19, 2022, monitor of participants, this is RE1 meeting. As I said in the pledge, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Jim.
Okay, so I hear motion to move into executive session pursuant to CRS 246402 (4). The board will consider application materials and letters of references pursuant to the candidate for superintendent.
Seconded.
And I invite the board and Ms. Cindy Eldridge.
Now I seconded.
Fraser?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Hart?
Aye.
Voice?
Aye.
Bryce?
Aye.
Will?
Aye.
Wright?
Aye.
Dinkin?
Six oh four, it adjourned at six thirty five. I would like to convene back into our regular meeting.
Do you want to repeat everything you just said?
Oh, sorry. We're good. We're good. Our executive session started at six oh four. It adjourned at six thirty five. No decisions were made in that executive session. We would like to convene back into our regular meeting.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, do I hear a motion to set the agenda? May I change their discussion?
Madam President?
Yes.
I'd like to note on the agenda that there is a typo on item thirteen. I under G policy BGE should have been written as GBE. Yeah, it's correcting the package just wrong on the agenda.
Okay.
GBE?
GBE is the correction. Thank you.
Okay.
Second in that motion.
Jeanette. Jeanette Hart.
Rachel, Paul, I, Kurt.
Hi.
Noise.
Hi.
Bryce.
Right.
Wells.
Right.
Wright.
Hi.
Thank you.
All right, we have a student presentation, the MCHS government.
Good evening, board. Board President, if you don't know me, my name's Avery Wright. But I sure hope you do all know me because you did sign my birthday card. Besides this, I'm also the president of student government at the high school. A few weeks back, our Chandler decided, our Chandler, I'm sorry. Chandler decided to come and approach us and ask if we'd like to do a presentation at the board meeting. So he said, yes, of course. For those of you who don't know, the honor presentations were yesterday, today. So us seniors who are in student government were kind of busy. So we passed the presentation on to our juniors who did amazing and exceeded my expectations. So I will now let our juniors talk.
Good evening, my name is Emma Wilson, and tonight we'll just be giving you a look into the clubs and organizations that MCHS has to offer. So before we officially begin, we want to inform you that we've included two fake clubs in our slides. At the end, we're going to see if anyone is able to guess which two clubs are false. So these are a list of all the clubs and organizations that MCHS has. And my fellow student government members will go into more depth than each of these.
I'll be presenting to you the arts of MCHS. So our really, the first group is the art association. I am actually co-president of the art association. And we do several art-related activities, including wheel paintings and art events to help get some of our art students more involved with the school and representation. Next is our music activities.
Sorry, there's a delay.
We have our jazz band, marching band, timbre choir, and concert choir. Many of these groups go to competitions and learn more about activities by traveling outside of quartets.
So our printing canthers, they print t-shirts in school. Now for theater, MCH Drama covers both narrative ninjas and impulsive improvisers. MCH's drama just closed, recently closed Mary Poppins, and it was very successful. We had community members come in into the show, and it was very wonderful. We have impulsive improvisers, which is a little side, under category, energy drama department. And they're a group of kids, and they host improv shows every month. There's actually another one coming up, May third. And then narrative ninjas is a group of students that goes to elementary schools to teach them about writing stories. And then they have those students collect, or students write stories, then they collect them, and then we come back later to present those stories that they've written, and it's very interactive and fun.
Okay, so leadership, I'm back again. Go ahead, the next one. So our two big leadership programs at the high school, our student government and National Honor Society. For student government, we're responsible, our big main responsibility is homecoming. We throw the dance, we decorate, we do a pep rally. Lately, we've been doing a lot of cute things like little pep assemblies, like we did for March Madness. We did Silent Shamrocks, Hushed Hearts, the festive things like that. National Honor Society, I'm sure many of you have heard of. Our big things that we do, like this year, we did a canned food drive, and it was a competition between all the grades. And then we also did the blood drive, which was a big hit this year after COVID, which was nice to see.
And at MCHS, we have an abundance of athletic groups. The clubs that involve more athletic side of it include the Fellowship of Christian Athletes, our color guard group, which happens both in the fall with marching band, and also in the winter. And then a new club that was established this year, which is a frisbee golf club. They go to the local park and they play frisbee golf around the course, and it's just super cool. And then we, this is our list of all of our athletics, ranging from volleyball to golf, to cross country each year, and everything in between. And it's, our athletics have, they've been pretty good throughout the years. And it's just a great way for all of our students to stay involved within the school, like doing things that they love.
And at MCHS, there's also a diverse array of clubs that may not fall under any of the previous categories, but are still very important to many students. First off, we have the French and Spanish Club, which I am the president of. And they hold weekly meetings and monthly parties to help immerse students, language students, in the culture of France and Spain and to give outsiders a glimpse into them. Next, we have the video game club, which is hosted by Miss Sarah Brosma. And they meet every Wednesday after school. And the students can bond over a love of gaming, nerd culture, and internet culture. Next, there's catering, which serves as an introduction to cooking and the culinary arts. The Rainbow Lions Club, which serves as a safe space for LTVD QA students who may feel ostracized, oppressed, or alone. We have Panther Chefs, who do catering for events and sell the famous cheesecake that I'm sure many of you know of. And lastly, the Colorado Coding Club, which is taught by the computer science teacher, Ms. Maras. And they hold a yearly code down, and they teach Python, C++, and JavaScript.
Thank you so much for our slides. We're very grateful for all the clubs and organizations that we have to teach at our school and to have a place to interact with other students and learn something more than just school. And I'd like to see if any of you could guess what our two false clubs were.
I wanted to say video gaming because I have COVID. Trying to get my kids off.
Oh, I know, I know.
Well, let me tell you, there's, it's, I'm headed to Denver tomorrow to legislative council, and the new club is e-club, esports. Yes, it's, it's coming. It's pretty controversial.
Which one did you guess?
Yes, the improv, but it's on there. Colorado Coding and Good Gaming.
Thank you guys very much.
Awesome presentation, our student government. Okay, do I hear a motion to approve the minutes for February fifteenth executive session, February fifteenth board meeting, April fifth executive session, April fifth special meeting, and April fifteenth special meeting?
Make a motion to accept them.
I think Ed just.
Okay, I second those.
Okay.
However, there are a couple of typos. Under A, Super Ten's report, which, which, which sort of being? This is. Our Tuesday, March fifteenth. Number eight, you'd say Mr. Burr submitted high report. And then on number nine, in the middle, it says, day owners. I would guess it's spelled K. That's one of them. Rachel.
Hi.
Paul.
Hi.
Kurt.
Hi.
Noise.
Hi.
Bryce.
Right.
Wells.
Right.
Wright.
Hi. Thank you.
Okay, and moving on, celebration reports.
Only attended yesterday morning's honors, but they were pretty, pretty good. And our Ms. Avery did an excellent job. I was, I was impressed. I want to talk to you some more about it. In the audience this morning, it didn't listen. They were neat. I loved the way you guys had it.
It was a bit like variety, I thought, to talk about different topics.
It was. It was.
I attended the golf tournaments the last two days, one in Durango and one in Cortez today. Our girls are doing well and improving all the time. They're hoping to get their team back to state like they did last year. They're, they're doing great. The new coach is doing a great job.
We're sitting here, Ameda.
Travis Wright is his name. Yeah, his, his brother actually golfed when I was working on our regional champion golf team for a couple of years. And our, our soccer team is 4-0 right now, which is amazing because we didn't even know if we were going to have a soccer, girl soccer team this year. Now we've got 29 girls out, and they're, they're winning.
Yeah.
They're doing very well, and it's very impressive. They, we also had a couple of, um, just the big scholarship winners. Got some finals. Overall, was one of them.
Okay, okay.
Huge good luck to Mr. Sander for the Mary Poppins, man, that was fantastic. We have a nice tour of Areola the other day. I stopped in, but you were in the classroom.
I apologize.
Went and looked at your new playground and saw that.
Anybody got anything else?
Track and field was going strong. I don't know if Stacy, if you mentioned track and.
I haven't, I haven't heard much from them, so. I am headed tomorrow to Chassa Legislative Council. There are several voting actions on the table, and one of those is that esports. And it's kind of controversial because they're wanting to not make them have to be eligible like sports and be more along the lines of an activity. So that's pretty, pretty controversial right now.
Just to give you a heads up, since you said that, this is all celebration work. Today, on one of my meetings, rural school talked about a new ruling for Chassa, and their school have, doesn't have enough students to do a team and their football. And two of their students went to one school to play, and another one went to four schools. Four of them went to another school to play, and it's created quite a division in their community. Were you on there?
Yep, yep.
It's like repeated correctly.
Yeah, and I didn't catch all, I didn't catch which town that was, but apparently Chassa just came out with a new ruling. Depending on where the student lives in their home district, they basically tell them which school they need to go to now. That's what I'm understanding. So they have students from one school, A, some go to school B to play football, some go to school C, and then the next day, they're all sitting in math class together, and it's, it's not been very pretty.
And yeah, that, you know, that's one thing that has always been a thing. A unique situation is like Mankas and Dolores. More Mankas than anything because they have fewer sports, but like, they can go, they don't have baseball. Let's pick baseball, for instance. They can go to Durango, they can go to Dolores when Dolores had a program, or they can come here. Because what it used to be was it's whatever border school your district borders, you can pick. Now, once you pick, you have to stay at that. You can't pick football for Durango and baseball for Cortez. Once you pick, you have to go to that.
And they're suggesting that all students go to the same school. But it's just something that you're coming up against.
And I don't know if it's because of, they're trying to spread them out so that, you know, they have more on every team. But I'm sure they're talking to some of these schools in eastern Colorado and stuff that are very close. Geographically, they're really close together and stuff. And so I'm sure they're probably trying to spread those kids out some, I guess. I don't know. I have no idea. They brought it up as a new thing that Chassa is doing.
So district, I'm not sure.
And, and, or co-op-ing, that's another very popular thing.
Brought up, and they said that's a very difficult thing.
Yeah, that's another thing that, that they do more on the eastern slope than they do, I don't know, any schools in Colorado or in, on the western slope that co-op. We, we, we offer programs that other ones don't, but when you co-op, then you have to take into consideration.
And let's do this during.
Okay.
And I would just like to say that I think this was the, the prom this year was a big hit because it was kind of more along the lines of what it used to be, so.
And Ms. Murphy did a great job, junior class, teens over prom, and they did amazing with decorations and the food and everything. It was very nice.
No, I know. Everybody was beautiful.
Yeah, glad to hear it.
The grand march was absolutely gorgeous.
All right, Mr. Burr, superintendent's report. Do you have anything you want to add?
Yes, ma'am. Good evening, Madam President, Board, Administrators, and Guests. First, I would like to introduce Robin Lewis. Robin is our interim principal at Menar Elementary School. Welcome aboard, Robin. Thank you very much. I also handed out a copy tonight of the five-card update that I gave you in your packet. I believe, Deborah, I think I'm, I'm done with going to schools with that, right?
Have you done Beach Twins?
No, I have Beach Street to go. Okay, so I'm one school away from having gone back around to feed all of the schools. Superintendent's Advisory Council, we did that last week, and the first time I've ever lost anything on my computer, I lost Superintendent's Advisory Council notes. So Deborah has been patient and gone back to all of those folks and got their input again. And did it go out today or is it going to go out tomorrow?
Tomorrow morning.
Okay, so you'll have all those notes tomorrow morning. I apologize, my, now I called Mark to try to save me, and he couldn't.
You really did.
Yeah, I did a good job. So we will have the next Superintendent's Advisory Council next Wednesday, and we will, they know what the program is and what to bring, so I look forward to that. I attended the Rural Alliance Zoom meeting. I, as you recall, I'm on the Professional Practices Committee, still with the PED in New Mexico. I attended a superintendent's meeting with PCC, but my number one job is the district, in supporting our leaders and our teachers and our students. I worked with my leadership team, and thank you, leadership team, for the way you've accepted me and how I've worked with each one of you, and it's been nothing but great. You guys are top-notch. Thank you. I've reached out to San Juan College, Fort Lewis College, Eastern New Mexico University, and PCC about a grow-your-own program. And I, I used Eastern because I use that in Roswell, did a grow-your-own program, and they gave me friends and family rate. So it was better rate than I could have gotten just walking in. And I'm looking at who's going to give us the best rate, best access, best programs for getting teachers, making, making new teachers for us, using our paraprofessionals and our, and our staff. My to-do list, get class size information from sites, class size guidance and policy. We've developed that. It's in your packet, actually. Students Advisory Council, I will have the next meeting in two win-stations now, a week over now. Complete the covenants, which is in your packet tonight. Visit all sponsors, all sites with response to the five cards, lack one. And visit with Councilman Wesgunk and Councilman Wall about our reading curriculum and connectivity and TOEIC. And I've already just done that with Councilman Wall, and we are going to set up a meeting and prepare for graduation. So you guys are doing a good job out there, all you principals, and here we, here we go, the downhill slide. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Burr. Staff reports. Who would like to start? Mr.?
I think they're in different order in your packet, but it, Mr. Archipack and Ms. Eldridge could go first. Mr. Parks pertains to what the principals are going to present.
Okay.
Good evening, board, board presidents, superintendent, members of administration, and community members. Thank you for giving your time to present my board report to you this evening. This last one has been quite busy with the superintendent's search and conducting interviews. Substantial amount of time doing that. Enjoyed working with you. Happy spring. I did want to relay a huge amount of appreciation that is going to receive from the staff for the drafted salary schedule that goes out to Kyle and his team, they met together. Questions and comments received have been very positive, encouraging, the new drafted salary schedule. The one area of employee benefits that I have received in that period of utilization is for our first-stop health. That's our telehealth employee assistance program. We have received a 20% increase in utilization. This is significantly higher than both the industry and carrier credit coverages average. Nearly nine out of 10 of the visits have been rated five stars. Eighty-seven percent of the visits are being serviced within under 30 minutes. And I compiled some information that shows you the cost savings with the implementation of the employee assistance program and the utilization. We are seeing substantial savings in regards to comparison on in-person visits versus the online visits. As you can see in my report, I broke that down. Savings of doctor office visits, $9,111 in the past month of savings. Urgent care, $6,053 of savings, and ER savings of $1,340. So it is helping overall savings with our, how our insurance, how we pay out of pocket versus the savings that we're having with EAP. Also, the last board presentation that you received, we had USI provide an update to you all on what they were planning on doing within the next 30 days, 60 days, 90 days to implement their new services. And I received confirmation last week that they are preparing the new and improved employee communication information, which includes the benefit guide, open enrollment PowerPoint packet, open enrollment flyers, and all of the communication, employee education information. They provided us with several options to choose from, and they're involving us in making those selections and putting all of that information together. So it'll be very specific to our district. I have a couple bullet points on changes that have been made within the district. You could take a, the, to review those bullet points. I also have included the health department and the maintenance and custodial board reports. I have to review the shout-out to Nurse Karen Maxwell from our health department staff. Karen provides a consistent place of care and kindness for all, with a very welcoming smile and kind care, no matter what illness or the lady our kiddos brings. We are very thankful. She came to our school and takes such good care of our kids. That was a shout-out from our health department director, Jack Paul. She's also provided an update on where we are at with COVID cases. The last reported case was March 23rd, November 2nd, which is almost an entire month ago. There is no longer a threshold for reporting outbreaks. Previously, if I were unrelated cases constituted an outbreak and were reported to the state, the public health department will continue to monitor the number of cases. And if there is a significant number of cases within the service, then they will be reported. They're no longer reporting individual cases, and they are not informing the district of students who have tested positive. It is completely up to parents to contact their child's school to notify staff of positive cases because we are no longer being, receiving that information from the health department. This hall has provided more in-depth information as far as COVID updates and the CDC guidelines. Under our maintenance and custodial sections, the first bullet point addressed the reports would be attached to this. However, Kyle and Ray and I and Mr. Burrus have requested the opportunity to review those, and then we'll present them to the board with our recommendations. They have been finalized and submitted. I would like to invite Mr. Lopez up to provide information in regards to his department maintenance and custodial stuff.
Yes, he so enjoys presenting.
Good evening, board.
What time?
Okay, as you're aware, and I've been working with Kyle a lot, this is going to be the track and field service. We did have a presentation with Lan from BioWorld as far as what we were missing on that. We had some concern with the track at the time, and Kyle can step in anytime. But it's just a matter of, there's a 30, 60-foot section that's going to be replaced through a warranty line. It's towards the finish line area. But the problem with the whole thing is they never added a wear layer on top of that. We did the spike top, but at the time, we should have went the next step, and it should have been a wear layer. Which basically what we've seen now is there's cold seams that you can see. I think Stacy's seen quite a few after walking. Quite a few. But what the wear layer does is it covers that whole thing because it's a spray-on. So the whole track would be sprayed on with this wear layer, which improves the warranty on it, an additional five years of warranty, so it'll make it to eight years. And one thing we might want to look at on that, and of course Kyle will present that later, is the asphalt that's underneath it, to make sure it's going to last, because that's new as well. Where 2019, so it already has two years on it, but not to let it go any further than what it is. Now's the time to catch it and fix the problem, make it right. So anyways, that's my part. And the next one is CMS, of course, we're going to, we have an insurance thing on the roof. The materials nationwide, they're running short big time. I did get a call, we're going to start getting some trucks coming in next week, ISO, which is insulation. There's going to be a large amount of stuff coming in, so I talked it through. And we kind of come up with a game plan to store this stuff for them until they start. Probably going to put it up on the old tennis court, I guess, as of right now. Something that's not really being used, it's kind of safe for kids, so we're going to use that as our, like, our construction zone area until everything gets started, which it may not even, yeah, go on till like next year possibly, it's just so tight. So we found with the game plan on that to get everything to come in, to get the material stocked. It's probably going to be a little eyesore, so just be aware that all this material is going to be sitting there for a while. And I'll let you know that any reports on when they're going to start, but it may not start this summer, but we'll see. The HVAC system in Arizona, we did have a company that come through and added a angle, but actually, we did a walkthrough with them last week. Kyle can probably present some of that as well, but I think it went really well with them. He's aware of what we're needing for the middle school in Beach Street for a HVAC system. And that project alone probably will take some time as well, so. And one thing he did mention, see if we can work with the roofing company, if we have to replace any equipment on the roof. With this claim, we might go to work together, two companies coming in and providing units upon the roof, so we don't have to tear anything else up, replace, and then add the roof. At this point, it might work out, be the fact of the material shortage and the HVAC system units are, as well, are short. Six days maybe in. So that probably won't be until next summer project. And that's listening to all the engineers and actually contractors, that are in all of the same boat. The Baiman, of course, I gotta confirm Dave, that's gonna start the sixth at Mesa and then Manon and CMS will follow for the flooring. And then T L Roofing, they're gonna start on May thirty-first, as soon as school gets out. They'll start on that roof at Mesa to get that completed, that'll probably take two months. So the schedule's gonna be really tight, big time. And then high-tech floors, they'll probably be, middle school is probably gonna take, I heard, probably two weeks. And then they'll jump over to Mesa another week, so everything's gonna be there again, a really short summer, it's gonna go quick. And of course, we got this new furniture coming in, so put the icing on the cake, that's gonna be another thing that we gotta get out. Luckily, the contractor is gonna be sucked out to put things together for business, so that'll make it a lot easier for everything to be put into classrooms and taken care of, so. Gonna be a busy summer.
You have a lot of materials and things coming in, do, do your contractors have plans to keep that all covered and safe and all that stuff?
Correct, yeah, usually the ISO whenever it comes in, usually they're well shrunk, wrapped pretty good and pulled up. But one thing, if, if something does come up, just a quick call to the contractor, they're located at Durango now, they pulled a company over to Durango, Farhoff for the roofing. So they have a kind of, they stationed in Durango now, so they can come over and get where it's perfect on that part. So basically, it's always an insurance claim, so our hands are kinda pulled away from us, so that company has to take care of it, it's kinda a big deal.
That's a good deal.
Yeah. And then one thing they might do though, to be honest with you, is they might start on Blue Serio, that's also an insurance claim, so. Either way, hopefully one of them will get done this summer. They stuff materials.
Curious on the track, Kyle showed us those samples that meeting a week or two ago. In two thousand nineteen, why wasn't that top layer put on there?
Yeah, I think a lot of it could have been cost. I mean, but talking with that gentleman, Glenn from BioWorld. Back then, if we would have done it, I think it would have been like a forty thousand additional cost to the surface. About sixty to ninety, somewhere in there. Depending on what, what you wanna go with, because there's permeable and impermeable, and I think it kinda showed in that report. The impermeable, if I might get this wrong, I'm not for sure, so I was getting confused. There's actually a steel coat in between the two layers, so like a water barrier. So whenever the water hits the top, where are you layer, it sheds off that instead of it dropping down to the asphalt and causing problems. So that's where the long-term, probably, it's gonna last a little bit longer, and it's a polyurethane setup, so. I think a lot of it had to do with the cost at the time, because there was a lot happening, we got stadium lights put in, the LED lights, that's, that summer was really busy and it carried on into the fall.
There was money.
Yeah, I'm thinking there, yeah, because there was a conversation about we have leftover money and then some things were purchased, and I don't know that we were ever given an option as to.
Yeah.
I remember, yeah, that option.
Yeah, as far as like which option we should go.
Probably not, I'm not for sure on that part.
But yeah, probably whatever, you know, we just need to, to save whatever we can and oh, that's, that's.
Yeah, so the, 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 parts it down now, it's just a spike top, basically within time it'll be gone.
Right, yeah.
Especially with the spikes going through it, every time they step, it's gonna tear it up.
Right.
And that's kinda what you're seeing now, a little bit towards the finish, so that's kind of a, a really big concern. But if we catch it now, it'll be less problem later.
Cheaper in the long run.
Pretty much, yeah.
Yeah, well, thank you for, you know, talking about.
We can go up and red if you want.
I don't want Durango coming here.
Any other questions?
Thank you, well, thank you.
Thank you, Ray.
Appreciate him answering your questions and providing that information, he's an expert in the area. I've also addressed the district opening, agencies positions coming open through in this year. As you can see, majority of these are the ones that have continued to be open throughout this year, that we've had covered with long-term subs. Our office is doing substantial recruiting efforts with talent ed and working with Mr. Burris on the Grow Your Own program. We will be able to fill the positions for our next school year. I've also been working with Katie Schreibt, I can't remember her name. Schreibt. Uh, she's been hired as the lead for the summer school program. And Katie is working with Kathleen Nelson. Katie Nelson. Handing over the program and, and giving her mentorship on how she ran it last year. We're working on assigning, offering teacher positions for the summer school program and also working with interns through the high school. I've been working with Katie as well on developing a so intern program. She's teaching students how to apply for jobs, develop their resumes, attend interviews, and I was asked to help her. She videotaped some presentations on, to provide to the students with pointers on interview skills and how to go about getting jobs, so. That was very interesting and, and a pleasure to work with some community members here locally in order to complete that process. A big project that we're working on next is the renewals, contacts, salary schedules, developing FTE counts from the class size counts. Our office will launch those eventually in the next month to complete that and get those contacts out. So if you have any questions or concerns, please do not hesitate to contact me. I'll be happy to answer or discuss it further with you. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, good evening, board president, board members, superintendent, unity. You'll see in my report a few different items here. The first is the school year twenty twenty-two, twenty-three budget scenario. So I actually provided a presentation in the packet and I went back and looked last year and I presented it as a presentation at the work session beginning of May. So I can go through it tonight, or I can just give it to you as information and then actually present it as a public item in that work session. It's really up to whatever you guys want. I am prepared to present it, but again, based on what I did last year, I did it at the work session in May, so. What it boils down to is we're gonna get about seven hundred and eighty dollars extra per student, per pupil revenue. It comes out to about a million and a half more dollars in our general fund than we had last year. So we're seeing an increase in funding from the state. The projection from the state level is that we're gonna drop about thirty kids, but again, that's a projection. Like, because we're all trying to project what next year's gonna look like. Essentially, what happens is they use that number, they'll start paying us, we'll do our October count, and if it's different than that, they'll adjust it and give us the difference in January, so. But that's just high level, again, I'll, I'll give you that full presentation at the work session in May. I provided quarterly financial statements for the third quarter. With seventy-five percent of our year gone, we spent about sixty-two percent of our general operating budget, so we're, we're in a good spot. Typically, this percentage is a little misleading because we encumber money for the rest of the year, so. Sixty-two percent is what we've actually spent, but we've encumbered more like eighty-nine percent because we have money encumbered for payroll for the next three months. Again, I think the only concern, and it's not really concerning because we have a plan, but the self-insurance is something that's not really gonna be changed until January as far as seeing any differences, so. We just prepare for that for the next six months like we have in the past, and then hopefully we'll, we'll start seeing some of that recoup as we go forward. As Ms. Eldridge had mentioned, we got our assessments for Pleasant View and Manaw. One company did a general structural condition assessment, and then we had another company come in and do mechanical, electrical, plumbing assessments. At the time I did, I, I wrote this report, we had just received the second set of documents, so we wanted to sit down and actually have a meaningful discussion at that level, come up with some options and then present it to the board, so as soon as we have all that, which will probably be the work session in May, we'll provide you those reports and we'll go from there. The salary schedules for next year. So I asked Mr. Burris if I could have a couple more weeks, there were some concerns that came up. And this isn't all of them, but it was around the, the salary schedule for technology, the salary schedule for the secretaries, the salary schedule for counselors, and then a few little just things that I didn't see, like I mentioned, there were just gonna be some things pop up and we're gonna try to address it before next year, so. With that said, I think we're in a lot better spot now, I finished up today. I feel, I, I felt certain before, but now I'm a hundred percent certain that we can take on this increase, it's, it's less than I even anticipated. So, and, and really it's about, what I, what I anticipate the cost of these salary schedules to affect our budget is about one point two to one point five with benefits, so about one point two, one point three million dollars. Now, that's not just the general fund, that's all of our positions, that includes grant positions and everything else, so. If you take into consideration, we carry about one point two, one point five every year, we just saw an increase in the general fund from last year to this year, about one point five. The increase from the year previous to last year was about one point one. I feel very comfortable that we can make this work and not be in a, a position, I, I, in fact, I feel like next year we'll be in a better position to actually identify things that we might wanna fix next year. So as far as that affecting the budget, I think we're in a really good spot. Capital projects, so I just wanted to put this in here because it's, it's been a concern for a few months, but we're at a spot where we really have to, to move on it, so. There's a prac, there's a field behind the high school and it's used for PE, it's used for multiple different practices for different sports, and at this point in time, based on a walk that I did, the football coach did, the athletic director, and Ray also, it's, it's not safe to put kids out there anymore. There's just too many holes, there's too many divots. The prairie dogs have been tearing up the backside of it. So in a sense, if we put kids out there, we're essentially putting them out there at risk. So we've come up with some backup plans for the classes and those activities until August, but then we're gonna have to reevaluate what that looks like. In the meantime, we've sat down and looked at different options of what we could do to replace that. Now, you essentially have two options, you can either resaw it or you can go artificial turf. The price difference between those, these are just ballpark figures and it's probably a little more considering things that went up, but it's probably in the ballpark of three to four hundred thousand dollars to tear it all up, put topsoil, lay new foundation, sod, put sprinkler systems in there, and then have to pay for water and then hope that we seed it correctly, we're not doing this again in a couple of years. If we go the artificial turf route, it's gonna be more expensive, it's probably gonna be in the six to seven hundred thousand dollar range, however, there is a couple things in our favor. One, water use, right, if we do this, we don't have to use the thousands and thousands of gallons of water we use every year to water it, especially being in a, a position where water is such a priceless commodity right now. We also have some agencies working with us to look at maybe some grant opportunities, because especially in Colorado, they're looking for ways to have people replace grass and with artificial grass or turf, just for the water savings purpose. And then there's also an opportunity that's not in stone or on paper yet, but there's conversations of, of the city participating in some of those costs, maybe if we can work out a situation where the youth football, they can use it through football. So they might be interested in trying to help out with some of those additional costs, but we'll probably have to put a gate around it and some other things that we decide to put artificial turf there. So we've reached out to a few vendors. We're in the works right now of seeing what those actual prices are gonna be from those vendors, and once I get that information, I'll bring it to you, but again, it's, it's a large expenditure, but we kinda need it, we don't really have anything else we can do at this point. And then I, I have some capital reserve requests and some donations and supplemental budgets that we'll talk about later. But with that, with all I have for our report, do you have any questions?
Thank you so much, Kyle. Appreciate all your hard work.
Good evening, board. So in my report, I'm gonna try and be brief because there's a lot to it and that doesn't distinguish me, so I'm gonna get through this really quickly. Basically, one thing that we will be looking at this evening are the presentation, presentations of our unified improvement plans from each of our schools and the district. Now, in what I would consider a normal year, we would be doing this probably in January. But some things have prevented that from happening. The state actually moved up their deadline this last year, so that those are due sooner. And to that, we're kind of working that in and making that part of our, our regular routine, in fact. Before we come, well, next fall when we return to school, I have a member from C D E who's gonna come down and work with us to develop those in August, so we can start that process and they'll be ready by October. But because we haven't actually done that yet this year, that's gonna be part of, of what we're doing this evening, sharing those reports with you. Quick update on K five E L A adoption, we're currently in the process of purchasing. All our docs are lined up and I've worked with Kyle and Mr. Palmquist in the grants department and making sure that our resources are available, but the goal is to have those materials on site before our teachers are leaving, so that they can get their hands on. Have them in their possession and be ready to a certain degree when we come back, so. Just a chance to play and look at those things and get accustomed to them. In addition to that, we are currently looking potentially at adding a K twelve assessment platform. We've discussed this a little bit at work sessions and board meetings, we're something that we could look at our students across the board from K to twelve and have a good picture of what that looks like. Currently, we, we don't really have a tool like that, we have some, some tools that are scattered, for lack of a better term, each school kinda uses some of their own things. Some of them are similar, but we don't use them in a unified way across this district, so. We're working to look at, at platforms that could accomplish that for us district-wide. Our principals have been witness to a couple of demonstrations from a couple of different companies, one being N W E A or otherwise known as MAP testing. And the other is Renaissance, which is STAR testing, which is something that we've been familiar with before, so. We've had presentations from both of those groups as well. Tomorrow afternoon, I'm convening a group of teachers to provide, get some feedback from them on, on current assessments and really what they would like to see going forward or what we would find most useful in, in that regard. Whether it's the two that we've looked at or if there's other options to talk about, but, so we're trying to collect, you know, as much information as I can from from administrators and teachers for those that use those things, so that we can have an informed opinion about what it is we ultimately want to do, so. Another item that I just kinda wanted to maybe throw out there just for potential discussion in the future is our elementary report card. And looking at whether we feel what currently is being used is effective or not, providing information to our families. And looking at whether we feel what currently is being used is effective or not, providing information to our families. I think there's a conversation to be had around that, so that's something that we're going to look at. Currently, state assessment, we are darn close to wrapping this up. Next Friday is the last day, and of course we're not here on Fridays, so next Thursday is our last day. But these guys in their buildings have been knocking it out. I mean, it's, it's no small feat to organize this and get this happening in each building and. I can't say enough about how well they've done to make that happen. It's, uh, it's a lot in a pretty short, short amount of time and, um. We should be right on time for being done by next week. In a lot of cases, um, some of our schools are already finished, so. And we have finished, uh, PSAT and SAT, that was last Wednesday. Let's make us. The thirteenth year. Yeah, yeah, so, um, so tho- those are all taking place and wrapping up. And the last thing I wanted to talk about is just continued, uh, principal mentoring that takes place. We continue to work with our principals on a weekly or bi-weekly basis, just. Being an ear resource, provide materials, things that they might need, conversation, talk about issues, et cetera, so. Um, that's part of my report. The last couple of pages of my report that I would like for you to, um, have a look at are. These are, this is data from our CMAS testing last spring, uh, twenty twenty month. Um, a couple of things I want to, you know, provide some clarification on with this data is. Um, last spring, the state did not assess all students in all content areas. We, it was broken up between, uh, third, fifth and seventh. Took English Language Arts and fourth, sixth and eighth took, uh, math. In a normal year, all of our kids would be tested in all of these areas, including science. But because of the pandemic situation we were in, the state felt it best to scale back testing. So this, this was their answer to that. Um, I will say from our perspective, it was helpful, at least in the sense that it didn't take nearly as much time. Away from things that we were already doing. But what I would, would. What I would say about the data that you see in front of you, um, it's probably not perfectly representative of. Our district as a whole. The other piece of it is that we had several hundred students that were participating in online school that didn't even take testing. So, so the numbers that you see there while do provide some base of information, um, we're not sure that that's everybody. And to have good testing information, um, it's just not, it's not here with this, but that's, that's what we had last year. I will say, as we go into this year and subsequent years, um, we have a full slate that we've given this spring. All grades have taken all tests except for social studies, which at the state level was determined that no one was going to take social studies this year, so we didn't take that test. But, so we will have basically what equates to a new baseline of information starting from this year. I think the exciting thing about that, and you know, our principals are going to talk about their unified improvement plans a little bit, but I think the exciting possibility with that is. Your, when you set a new baseline, you basically can restart yourself. So we have a great opportunity in this next year to really demonstrate some growth and move our, our schools along, so. I'm very excited about that possibility and we can certainly talk about that in future meetings, um, what, what we think that can look like, but. The idea that. If, if there's a benefit, and, and I use this term very loosely. A benefit that has come out of COVID is the fact that we're going to get a restart on some of our data. And, um, that could work to our advantage. And, and, and just really refocusing our efforts to get our kids where we want them to be, so. So that's, that's that data. If, um, if you have questions about it, we can certainly discuss, but it's, it's pretty, um. Like I said, with, with the caveats about, uh, about how incomplete it is, it's, it's hard to draw any real conclusions. Okay, I'm going to go ahead and move into the district unified improvement plan. The, the first page that, um, I have provided is, um, I think. Everyone, you may have a copy of this, which probably looks nicer than this as far as coloring and everything. This is, um. This is the school performance frameworks. And we've discussed these a little bit in the past, but, um, just, just to, um, remind you, this is what is posted on. School view on the CDE website. For, um, information about our school district and our schools as well. This information, the top part still is, is reflective of twenty nineteen. Twenty nineteen is the last time we had a full slate of testing, so. Because we haven't had any testing, at least complete testing since then, the state is still not looking at anything but twenty nineteen. In this fall, we'll start to see some more information, some more data come out because we will have a full slate, but, um. For performance framework purposes, we are still operating on the twenty nineteen framework, so. Um, you can see here, the, uh, rating for the RE one school district is accredited with priority improvement. And basically, it, it kind of highlights where we are in. In relation to meeting expectations or not, so, um, our achievement. Was low and did not meet expectations. Our post-secondary workforce readiness was approaching and our growth was approached. Again, this is where I will go back to the, the opportunity to reset ourselves is. We have a chance to make some real hay, I think, here in this, in these categories and have some, uh, some strong. Performances for the performance framework going forward. Okay, um, each, each of our schools has. Those, uh, reports within this packet as well. Uh, I think they're a little bit later, but they are available as well, so. So the, what I'd like to do is go right to the district unified improvement plan, and this is an executive summary. If. If you had the whole improvement plan, it'd be about sixty pages. And I felt like I saw the packet as it is, it was already this. So we get more docs for, for Ms. Ramsey, it's probably best that we scaled that back. But, so basically the executive summary is more or less, uh, an overview of the unified improvement plan created for the district. And. For the most part, what I would say is that the goals that you see here are things that are probably not unfamiliar to you because we have. We had utilized some of these goals in the past. Some were, you know, inspiring community trust and support to drive student achievements. Build a strong and effective team of educators, recruitment and attention, uh, retention. Ensuring academic excellence in all schools, improving rigor and tier one instruction. Building a strong team of effective educators, this is enhancing support for our principals. Ensuring academic excellence, these are aligned strategies for dropout and graduation rates. And building a team of effective educators with observe, observation and feedback. And ensuring academic excellence in all schools with our ninety day plans. So I, I think the, the comment or the thing that I would like to just say is. Take, take away from this particular plan, um, this was developed last fall. And, um. You know, our, our horizons look a little different now than they did last fall. So there may be some things that are out of context here to a certain degree, but I would say by and large. We'll be looking to continue to work on those areas. When we do develop our plans for the coming year of twenty two, twenty three. I can see some, some, uh, plans that are more concise and, and offer some, some, um. Attainable goals and information that will be usable by all of us. And it may be that, um, within that process, we look to you guys to a certain degree to help us develop some of that as well, so. Anyway, so that's, uh, again, that's the brief executive summary. I mean, there's more to it, but, um. I want to give our principals their time up here as well. Like others, if you have questions, you know, feel free to reach out and ask, um. And, and we can walk through some of this stuff. I can provide you copies of the fully unified improvement plan if, if you so choose. It might be good for going to sleep at night. But it is, uh, it is, it is something that we do on a manual basis and is, is part of our, our process. And I look forward to it being a more. A more informative and robust part of what we do, just to help guide us through some of the other things that we do annually, so. I'll segue to our first elementary school at Kemper.
Good evening, Board. I told I have five minutes, so we'll talk. Thank you for giving us this opportunity. Uh, I'm Katie Nelson, Principal at Kemper. We served roughly four hundred or three hundred and forty students this year at Kemper. That was, um, a little decrease. Sixty-six students we served last year. Uh, last year, our enrollment of those three hundred and sixty-six students, um, a third of those students were enrolled in CDLS. Which is the online, um, state platform. During the past two years, our staff has been dedicated to provide our students with the best education despite the challenges brought on by the global pandemic. And during these past two years, Kemper was remote learning twenty-seven days last year and seventeen this year. I'll get into some data. I want to, I know Mr. Farr has put CMAS data into your packets, but I just wanted to. Um, celebrate some of our successes, um, with this limited data, but we did see some, um. Huge growth in some of our, um, grades. And so I won't go through it all, but I just wanted to recognize our third grade to see, um, third grade class took the ELACMAS. Um, two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty-two, twenty-seven point four percent of our students met or exceeded, uh, grade level expectations. The last year, twenty twenty to twenty twenty-one, forty-four point two of our students met or exceeded expectations. Uh, this was a sixteen point eight percent increase. Which was exciting. Our fourth grade took math last year. And in two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty, eleven point nine percent of our students met or exceeded expectations. Last year, forty-seven point five percent of our students met or exceeded expectations. Um, that was a thirty-five point six percent increase, which was exciting. Our fifth grade students last year took the ELACMAS test in twenty nineteen, twenty twenty school year, thirty-eight point three percent of our students met or exceeded. Expectations. And last year, we saw an increase to forty-eight point one percent of our students. That's a nine point nine percent increase. Dibbles data, moving into dibbles, um, we take dibbles three times per year at the beginning of year, middle of year and end of year. At the beginning of this year, forty-one percent of our students performed at benchmark or above on the three-year dibble testing. And forty-four percent of students, um, tested at benchmark or above at the middle of year benchmark testing. We are gearing up for our end of year testing next week, so we're excited to see, um, that growth, growth in progress. Um, I have. Some math district interim data for you. We are, our students have taken cycle one and cycle two for the math interim data. Um, again, this is, this isn't growth, it's just achievement based off the grade level standards. Um, cycle one for our kindergarten, eighty-five percent of our students met or exceeded grade levels in cycle one, and eighty-nine percent of our students. Met or exceeded expectations in cycle two. In first grade, forty-five percent of our students met or exceeded grade level expectations during cycle one. And then during cycle two, seventy-eight percent of our students met or exceeded expectations. In second grade, sixty-two percent of our students mastered, uh, expectations on cycle one and sixty-eight percent. Met or exceeded expectations. Third grade, I have just cycle one data for you, forty-seven percent of our students met or exceeded expectations. In fourth grade, cycle one, forty percent of our students met or exceeded. In cycle one and in cycle two, twenty-one percent of our students met or exceeded expectations. Our fifth grade students take the STAR math test. Um, and at the beginning of the year, forty-five percent of our students met or exceeded expectations. And the last part is monitoring fifty-five percent of our students met or exceeded expectations. Kemper's goals stated within the UIP are to increase ELA and math growth and achievement by increasing our tier one rigor. Instruction, improving our data-driven systems and continuous cycle, feedback cycle for staff and maintaining the positive culture and climate. From actions we took to achieve those actions, or we are using our format of assessment data to. Adjust our lesson planning, our teacher's common lesson plan to make sure that we have the best lesson plan that is presented to our students. Um, we improve data-driven practices. We have been refining our practices. For staff to look at data, to respond to data on an effective manner. We improved our intervention practices to target skills. We have been working with Dr. Billy Snow. Um, he has been providing our staff some professional development as well as refining our intervention systems to make sure that. Um, your needs, student needs during that time. And we utilize a strong PBIS and trauma form system to decrease student referrals and increase the school culture. And one of our goals is to decrease teacher turnover rates. I just want to acknowledge that the hard work and dedication of our Kemper staff have the privilege of working with some amazing people. And our successes are directly related to our hard work and passion as well as the Kemper family culture. Thank you very much.
I know. Yeah, I just want to tell you. I, I love reading your, your data. That is, and that made me feel really good last night. I was reading that and going, oh, perfect.
Good evening, Board, Superintendent Community. I am Angela Soff, the Principal at Lewis in Pleasantview. Just want to give you a summary of our UIP. I know you have the details in front of you. Our goal for the third year was to carry forward the progress we were making in two thousand nineteen to twenty before we shut down with the pandemic. At that point, both of my schools were at the performance level. And staff was just beginning to learn and get trained on some of the get better, um, faster strategies. That the other schools had been working on for a year or two. Um, just a slight history on that, part of that training was grant funded, so it was targeted towards the schools and turnaround first. And that's why our two, um, rural schools kind of came into that at the end, so. When you look at the UIP for those schools, we, uh, the leadership team decided to carry that on. Get more training on that this year and really kind of dive into it in depth that the other schools in town were, um, got. Additionally, one thing that we all agreed on when we met at the fall was we really wanted to put an increased focus on math instruction. And our students learning number sense this year. Um, so one of the goals that you read in the UIP is that we will be doing number talks within the classroom a couple of times a week. It's at certain target days, just given the extenuating circumstances this year. Um, I can say we're not doing that twice a week right now. We did get all the number talk materials in. I have trained teachers and I'm actually pulling groups to help teachers out. So I'm working with kids to do number talks and increase that number sense, and then we'll be likely to make sure to take it. School-wise at those schools, once we have that planning time back on Fridays, we can do PD, so I'm really excited about that. Um, our goals for student data are based on the interims. Just a quick history on the interims, those were created after we got rid of, um, some testing that we were using prior. To have them mimic CMAS testing more, so the rigor on the interims is high. It's a lot of, um, reading and a lot of. You know, written response answers even on a math test, so it's not just straight computation. That's one of the reasons we decided to keep those interim data points in our U, our UIP. So just real quickly, I'll let you know where we're at this year for math. I'm going to report out on that only just because we have to keep it kind of. So just real quickly, I'll let you know where we're at this year for math. I'm going to report out on that only just because we have to keep it kind of short. There are three cycles to the math test. Not all grades are in that third cycle. That's coming up within the next week or two. So kindergarten, cycle one, these are the percentage that met or exceeded the goal, eighty-seven point five percent. Cycle two for kindergarten was a hundred percent. Kindergarten still has to do cycle three. First grade, cycle one was ninety-four point seven percent. Cycle two was seventy-five percent. That decrease is common just because that rigor in second grade really starts to, when they're subtracting multi-digit numbers, we tend to see a little bit of a dip, but we were still over our benchmark goal of fifty percent. So that was good. Second grade, cycle one was eighty-five percent. Cycle two is actually eighty percent, which is huge because we can often see a little bit of a dip there in math, just because that level of what the kids need to know and perform goes up. Third grade, ninety-four point one percent for cycle one. Second cycle, forty-three point eight percent. Third cycle, they did just finish eighty-eight point two percent. Third grade is a huge year for math and reading. Students go from learning to read to, or from, you know, to reading to learn, but in math, it also is when they start to do multiplication and division. So what we tend to see is students do well with addition, but to do the inverse with subtraction, we'll see a dip. The same with multiplication. It tends to be a little bit easier because it's presented as repeated addition. And then again, when it goes into division, it's always harder for the kids. But again, third grade scores were back up. Fourth grade, cycle one, sixty-two point five percent. Cycle two, oh pardon, excuse me. Fourth grade, cycle one, sixty-three percent. Cycle two, seventy-two percent mastery. So again, we're meeting our goals of fifty percent or higher. Fifth grade, finished all three cycles. Cycle one, sixty-two point five. Cycle two, seventy-eight point six. Cycle three, sixty-six point seven. You're going to see a dip in fifth grade because it's all fractions at the end. We are adding and subtracting and multiplying and dividing. So, but again, we still met our goal of fifty percent or higher. I'm actually very proud of these scores because like I said, these interims were designed to be a little bit more rigorous and to mimic C M A S more. So we just finished our C M A S testing at Lewis. Makeups are almost done. I think we have a couple of students. C M A S at Pleasantview started this week. So far, we've had a hundred percent attendance at Pleasantview, which is great. So hopefully that will continue this week. We had all staff cooking breakfast for kids and serving breakfast this morning, egg casserole. I mean, it's just been kind of great just to have that community help and staff. Other schools purchased the Renaissance STAR testing this year and have some year-long data that they can report. We did not get access to that until January. We purchased it late in the fall with grant money, but they don't start until January then. So we did a benchmark test. The reason that we did this is that's the norm data that we are missing. And so we benchmark in January, there's progress monitoring, and then they'll do that final benchmark in May, so I don't have anything to report out yet until we get that final test. We've got dibbles data that has been updated and we're progress monitoring. The one thing I just want to report kind of in general on that is what we're seeing across the board in both schools. And I've talked to Adam about this, our second graders are struggling. That's the proof the kindergarten is never shut down. So we are really focused at both my schools on those, that grade level. Starting in January, when we were seeing some of the dibbles data come back, we restructured our groups, did some morphemic awareness. We are seeing good growth in both schools right now with the small groups that we're targeting for the phonics. So I'll be happy to report out that dibbles data later in the spring, too. For our U I P next year, I don't see a lot changing in the goals that we want. We still want to increase the rigor with math and reading. And all staff really wants to get on board with the number talks and kind of dive a little bit deeper into that to help the rigor in the math instruction. We also be learning the new reading curriculum, so I know there's going to be a lot of professional development around that, so we'll see some goals. Does anybody have any questions?
You said you just purchased STARS? So that what is, if the district decides to fill N W E, what is that?
We only purchased it for half a year. So yeah, it's a case of we're not doing it.
It's going to be hard for teachers to do that transition back.
Because we didn't, we're not doing it as a district right now, and each school kind of with grant funding. And we typically get a little bit less grant funding because we're smaller. But with some of the extra monies, I was able to access, you know, more funding this year, which has been great for the two small schools. By the time I got it, they wouldn't let us start until January. But we'll at least have that norm data point, which is.
The district may stay with STARS, so then you.
Yeah, and then we'll be, you know, right on because then we'll be able to get the growth data if we do stay with it for next year, which we won't have this year because we won't have enough data points. Yeah.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thanks for coming on Saturday.
Thank you.
Um, just go briefly. Menah would be our, our next school. Just getting our feet wet, so I felt like it probably wasn't quite fair to throw it. Well, there's two schools up out there, right? Good luck, kid. But what I'll do is I'll just briefly review the executive summary, U I P for Menah. And I do, I would like everyone to note, if you get the chance to look at the Menah performance framework. At the time when this took place in two thousand nineteen, they had improved to the place as a performance school. That was really impressive for, for where we had seen their results previously. And it, it, it set the tone for some, some good work going forward. Sadly, COVID got in our way and we're kind of back to a square one for everybody, but their, their current rating is, is pretty solid. So I just wanted to share that. A couple of items that were highlighted in their executive summary. Just the priority of continuing to improve strong tier one instruction. I think you kind of hear that theme across the board. At elementary level, obviously, we're planning on doing that with our new materials and professional development that goes with that. That's exciting. Other, other highlighted areas for Menah were emotional students, staff engagement, and just some goals that were listed there that, that you can see as well. Utilizing wellness, building relationships, decreasing average referrals, et cetera. And then it continues with establishing a consistent culture of high expectations for the students. Again, improving tier one instruction through observation, coaching on D B I strategies. Things that we were doing district-wide or continue to do district-wide. Engaging in comprehensive whole school reform, which is similar to things that we have discussed before. And then multi-tiered systems of support is, is something that we'll be looking at, not just at the Menah level, but district-wide so that so that we have some solid systems to provide support to that school as well. So those are just a couple of the items that are highlighted in their, their plan. And what I would like to do is at a future work session or, or board meeting is provide you with some of their data. So you can have a look at that and see where we're going. On deck, Mesa. Evening, school board, superintendent, and community. I'd like to introduce Crystal Crowe, my assistant principal, who's going to assist in this presentation. Mark, if I can get you to put up the data sheet. Keep scrolling down, it might be attached to it. Okay, I guess it's not on there. All right. So I'll go ahead and start. Our packet that I included in with you guys should have a sheet that looks like this. And we're going to be focusing a lot on this to drive what we're doing this year. Our U I P executive summary is included in your packet. And it does include our two thousand twenty-one data to show growth in E L A and in math, C M A S. But unfortunately, the framework that we have is from the two thousand nineteen data that shows Mesa is on improvement plan. Currently, what has really killed us is COVID. Teaching in person is, and this lies virtually, it just, it just doesn't work. And you guys all know that, that it's just tough. So it really hit us hard. Our staff has worked so hard to improve tier one and tier two instruction. Just making up that lack of growth that our students have had due to the pandemic. So we're focusing on achievement and growth, both in math and E L A. And we are working not just with our free and reduced or our low-performance students, we're working with everyone. Because if we don't get everyone to succeed, we're not going to see any growth at all. So that's where we're focusing this year. So we've, what we're, what we're doing now is we have partnered up with Transformative Leaders Network, which is Dr. Billy Snow. And he's assisting us in our backwards planning, not just in math, but in every subject that we teach. We want to know where we want to be and how to get there the easiest way possible. We don't want to sit there to start pedaling our wheels over and over and over again. We also adopted a SIPs program, which we're going to show you in a few minutes what that looks like. And we have seen tremendous growth even in our kindergarten kids, in their fluency rates, their comprehension, and just they're exploding in their reading. We've adopted seven steps and talk read, talk write from Nancy Motley. And that's one of the sustained duties that we've had for the past about three, four years now. And we're going to continue doing that. We have school-wide interventions, intervention block set, okay? Ten to ten thirty, all of third grades and interventions. Ten thirty to eleven, all of fourth grade. And it works from kindergarten all the way to fifth grades. There's no opting out of it. We also had hired a math interventionist for the year. And we're working super hard with her in helping those kids that are struggling and are also not neglecting the kids that are advanced. We're pushing them even more. So we have daily challenges there. The hardest thing for us right now is what to do next. And that's why we have a wonderful interventions team. We have a great statistician. So Drew, thank you for letting us have your wife. She is awesome. And our staff and everyone's just working hard to get those achievement and growth that those students need that are super struggling. So I'm going to turn this over to Crystal Crowe because you only have five minutes, but we have a two-minute-plus video on what SIPs is. I'm inviting all of you and the community to come in and see what this program is doing. It is phenomenal.
All right, so SIPs is, I'm going to mess it up somewhere. Systematic instruction in phonological awareness, phonics, and sight words. And this program was adopted into Mesa mid-January. Through the progress monitoring that we have done, in just that short amount of time, the growth has been astounding. And all I can say or attribute it to is the hard work of students we have, but our amazing interventions team and our teachers. They are phenomenal. They've taken this program, they run with it. Again, thank you, Drew. Ms. Pearson is phenomenal at organizing all of this, managing our data. It has been astounding. Kids are loving to read. And they're wanting to read. And we all know if they don't have that foundation, they're not going to succeed. Their progress monitored biweekly for mastery. If they don't meet mastery, then they're going, they go back and they're re-taught the lessons or whatever parts they're maybe needing because of the gap. Our dibbles, our star reading has been amazing to see the data come up and it's jumping quite a bit. Students are reading again and they're loving it. So I don't want to go into it. As Robert said, we invite you guys to come see it. I don't run it, but my staff does and they're phenomenal. So Mark, if you could bring up the video and all of that support.
It's something we've seen since we have adopted, adopted the program, kids in the hall just reading their books. I mean, I haven't seen that in years. And that's great to see. I'm like, what are you doing? Wait a minute, yeah, let me finish this, then I'll talk to you. So that's.
To ensure that all students grow into engaged, independent, and thoughtful readers, the nonprofit Center for the Collaborative Classroom embarked on a decades-long partnership with the late Dr. John Shuffelbein to develop SIPs, systematic instruction in phonological awareness, phonics, and sight words. SIPs is a mastery-based, multi-level program that develops word recognition strategies and skills necessary for reading success. You can use SIPs two different ways, as an intervention in grades one through twelve, or as a core foundational skills program at kindergarten through grade three.
These are high-frequency words. Read them across again.
SIPs accelerates student learning by strategically assessing where students are at and placing them in the program right at their point of need. Taking a structured literacy approach, SIPs guides learning within and across three levels with a focus on teaching foundational skills to mastery. SIPs beginning level focuses on consonant sounds and short vowels. Children learn to read one-syllable words by blending the sounds represented by the letters. In SIPs extension level, students begin identifying and analyzing spelling patterns. They learn long and complex vowel sounds and begin to recognize that many of these are represented by more than one spelling. The third phase, SIPs challenge level, develops strategies for decoding and spelling polysyllabic words to read by syllables using affixes, roots, and the six-syllable types. For older readers, SIPs Plus uses age-appropriate, high-interest materials for students in grades four through twelve who are reading at a first or second grade level. The instruction in SIPs is data-driven. Teachers observe students during the lessons and utilize mastery tests to determine whether to move students forward, reteach, or adjust the pace of instruction. When your assessment data indicates that students need even more support, we've created the intensive, multisensory instruction for SIPs component to support them. SIPs transforms reading for students. Every time they read a new book, they experience the pleasure that comes with success. And as their confidence grows, they find themselves wanting to read more and more. SIPs unlocks the world of the written word and sets the foundation for a life of reading.
Thank you for your time. I'm going to be humble. I don't have all the answers, but I have a staff that does. And I just turn to them and they're my experts. Do you guys have any questions for us? It's great. Well, you need to work.
It goes all day, goes all day. We have interventions all day long in the classroom and in small group. And it's phenomenal to watch these groups in action.
Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
So I'm not going to have a single step. We'll give you any numbers on that. The high school is different. And for us, it's about graduates. It's about what happens when they come in. We take them from, when they come in as freshmen and get them ready for life after school. That's what our job is. So when we look at our identified improvement plan, it's what are we doing to get everybody ready for life after school? Because we're just the first step in the future of their careers. So when you look at what we're trying to do, we're trying to do one of the main things that we have focused on for many years and will continue is post-secondary workforce readiness. We will continue to do that. We've done that years ago. We've done that for fifteen years. That has been what the homegrown grant's been about, is what the RISE grant's been about. So we kind of backed that up and think about what do we want our students to be ready for? Well, either they're ready for career, so they go right into the workforce, which we've always been working on a lot of our C T E programs. But it's also for college and getting them ready for that. So and then the other option is military, they're ready for career or college, they're ready for the military. So we kind of get that one covered in there as well. So when we look at what we're trying to do, what we need is some better supports. And so our, our improvement plan, what we needed to improve on was providing some of those supports to make sure that they're ready. So part of that has been in the implementation of our homeroom. We started that. We've always had some type of homeroom. It's changed every year for now years. But, you know, we started, we put it back in part of the schedule. We are putting an emphasis on it so that we are introducing students to what are the options, what are the career choices? As part of that, we've adopted major clarity. We've been using that. And that's something that will follow students for years after they leave. That when they get resumes and they get any type of certification that can go into or examples of their work, that will follow them after they graduate. So they will always have that. So we're trying to get. So we're trying to get that. And we also got them getting ready for college. I mean, some of you saw the honors diploma presentations. We have great students. And that, you know, we've sent students to the best schools around the country and that's because we have a phenomenal staff. But we can always improve. And some of the improvement areas that we've really been focusing on are our support systems. And so when we wrote this to the areas that we really wanted support that we felt would help our school overall was with ELL support, our English language learners, and then also with our Native American support. And so in the past year, we have hired an ELL para that is there in and out every day, is doing a fabulous job, helping our ELL students. We've got two classes implemented, so we have students in those as well. So that's part of that. And then we're also, we've hired a Native American para in addition to having the coordinator liaison for Native American district level. We now have one at the high school that's just full-time working there. So a lot of our stuff, I didn't bring data because we haven't tested in a long time. We had a third of our students gone last year, so looking at that doesn't really apply. We're in it for the long haul, you know? And so we're looking at what are the changes we need to make to make sure that we have our students ready for their futures, for their careers. And so that's what we've kind of focused on with our improvement plan. And we'll continue to do that. You know, we break that down to our 90-day plan. We're looking at increasing our data-driven instruction, looking at our school climate and culture, and then making sure that everybody graduates college and career. So if we can provide our opportunities for the students, then we've done our job. And that's what we've been focusing on, is making sure that there's opportunities there for students to be ready for whatever it is they want.
Perfect. That's a perfect, yeah. Sounds like.
Drew?
Drew?
We can just come up and say, I don't have data, sit down. He was giving you the extra time.
I gave mine to Robert. So I'm giving you something a little different because my brain works different than the UIP. So I'm going to kind of break it down. But good evening, board superintendent. My name is Drew Pearson. I'm the principal of the middle school. And as I mentioned, I'm married above my head. What I'm going to do is with UIP, rather than looking at it the way it is, it just doesn't make sense to the reporter. So I kind of took the root causes and then I'm going to build into what we're doing. So I just kind of gave you some of the data. That first page is just a breakdown of our school. But the root cause, the things that I really looked at in data to try to dive into this year with our UIP was just looking at our yearly growth. One of the challenges for the middle school, particularly right now, is the fact that the last time we were testing was 2019 comprehensively. Not a single one of those students are in the middle school right now. So I have nothing to work off in terms of where our students are. We've got this one data piece. But I looked at our trends in the data and what I saw, and you can kind of see this here is over the past, you know, back from 2018. What you'll see consistently is across the board in achievement scores, we are below. And so that's really one of the goals that we're focusing in. It's just tier-one instruction. How are we going to target our students with tier-one instruction? Make behaviors tier-one instruction? And then additionally, how do we bring these scores up? By bringing in tier-two and tier-three interventions to get those areas where we've got some low-performing students. They're not going to get what they need in the classrooms. So we're really looking at targeting those. And so that's kind of the two areas of the yearly growth that we're looking at. And I put just across the board, this is the case. But then you'll look and you'll see that our minorities and our Native American students, this is an area where we really want to focus our attention, is how do we bring those scores up? How do we close those achievement gaps? And so that's one of the things that we're looking at too, how we provide targeted interventions for those students as well. The next thing is social, emotional, and behavioral health. Obviously, if you've been around the middle school, you know that we deal with behaviors. But honestly, in the COVID pandemic, one of the things that we saw is not just that, but the trauma that students were. So many students were unable to conflict, you know, resolve conflict and deal with those kind of conflicts. So that was one of the things that we looked at. On this third page there, you'll see kind of some of our data from referrals. And that kind of talks about suspensions and our average daily referrals. The left side is what our referrals look like in terms of, this is the amount of referrals that we're dealing with on a yearly basis. But because the last three years have been so inconsistent, 2019, 2020, we were out in March. Last year, we had a period of time where we're out here and there. And this year, we're not to the end of the year. So what I did is put that down in average daily referrals. This is how many of these behaviors that we're dealing with on a daily basis. So this is something that we targeted. What I do love and what you can see is that we're seeing a downward trend. These numbers are closing down. So we're really focusing on restorative practices and our PBIS positive reinforcements with our students and consistency and some of the things that we're doing. That was one of our second goals. There's just some different information there. And this is shared out from actually our school counselor programs and needs assessment. And this kind of shares some of the trauma that our students are dealing with. It just says, this is the reality of what we're trying to deal with with these students and we're working with them. You'll see things like how many students are suffering from anxiety presently? Forty percent of our students are identifying that they are presently suffering from anxiety. So one of the things that we focus on is how do we give these kids proactive approaches to deal with stress, to deal with conflict, deal with those kind of things? So that was that second cause. And then the third one is obviously just teacher retention. We cannot do anything at the middle school without pay. I appreciate all the work that our leadership team has done to close that gap. But what we have to focus on is what we can control in our school. So you'll see just some of the data, the turnover that we've had over the past few years. And it's very challenging. I highlighted in there that when I came in, this is now my fifth year, but over the four years before this was written, there's actually of our 24 core content teachers, five of them are still there, which means that that turnover and what our core content is, is just inconsistent. When we're bringing new people in every year, it makes it challenging. So we talked about that because that affects our tier-one instruction. We don't have consistent, well-trained and well-supported teachers in our classrooms. That tier-one instruction level is always going to be struggling. And so those are the things that we focused on. Those are kind of the root causes. And then if you'll turn to that last page, I kind of put our points and the things that we're actually trying to address these and how we're trying to address those. The first one is targeted intervention. This is in regards to our, just our achievements scores. It's a targeted intervention and sustained learning. This is a COVID response, having to do the block schedule. That was kind of a thing where we had to try to keep our contact tracing down. But what we found also is that it gave opportunity for our students to have more independent practice, where they had more opportunity in class to, here's what you're going to do, get to it. And they're having the coaching where the teachers are able to be there with them in our science classes, whatever those things. So we looked at that. We're looking at how do we support our tier-two and tier-three interventions, as I mentioned. And so our leadership team has really been looking at our intervention process, our RTI process, and say, how can we build out those tier-two interventions? One of the things that's challenging is staffing, and we're still kicking on that, but we've been able to implement some things. And we're also looking at graders. I'm very grateful for Mr. Parr and all the work he's doing with the STAR, NWA, or one of those things are, because that's going to be huge for us to have norm reference data. But also, when we have seven elementary schools coming in and our sixth graders, it's very difficult to get a gauge of where they are across the board. So something like that that is consistent to the district is going to give us that information where we can say, okay, here's where our kids are. Here's what we need to target. We can dive in and then continue it and hope it will pass on to the high school in the next three years. Those are the things that we've been addressing there for the restorative practices and the behavior supports. Like I said, we are consistently refining restorative practices. That idea is not just issuing consequences to students. You see that we issue the consequences. You see how many suspensions and extortionary expulsions. That doesn't always teach kids because sometimes they're home. And so how do we teach them how to take ownership in their behavior? And that's a lot of what we're doing in the middle school. And then, as I said, the step two, this second step is our counselors doing a tier-one for all of our students. They're just kind of doing some conflict resolution training with our students. This is part of our daily, our weekly curriculum. I should say they do it once a week on Monday. We're in the same language. They're saying, here's how we deal with these kind of things, so address these. And then the last thing is for staff retention and development. The things that we can focus on, this is our third goal, was really how do we celebrate what's going good? How do we build up the staff and encourage them? And so we've done a lot of things that you can see outlined in there and just having weekly celebrations. That thing that was actually read earlier about the nurse was actually one of our staff recognitions that has been passed out of the chain. That just goes in our weekly message. And then just looking at, again, our tier-one instruction. And that kind of goes back to what we're looking at is how do we give professional development? And so what we've done this year, at least for the first half of the years, we've taken our staff and said, all right, we're going to do every quarter. We're going to do a day where we'll get like six or eight of our staff and we're going to differentiate targeted instructions that you can come and learn from all your people that have been doing this and just give them the things that they need differentiated. But it also gives our staff an opportunity to feel valued as they're getting professional development. So those are the things that we've really been working on. I would agree with Mr. Chandler. We don't have a ton of data because it's just, we don't have a ton of data right now, honestly. But that is one of our goals, to start testing tiers. That is our UIP for the year. Has any questions?
We hope for those five to stay.
They're phenomenal.
Just a couple of quick notes that I can get out of the way because we want to get on with other things. One, I want to acknowledge the group of leaders that you see over here because of the hard work. I hope that within all of this, you see the heart and the care that they put into their work on a daily basis. It's been super helpful for me. And I think I can say for the rest of our administrative team, when I know that they're out there. And it makes our ability to do work easier because I don't necessarily have to worry that they're not thinking about their kids and doing what's best for their kids. So I would like to really acknowledge the hard work and just the group of people where they are because they make this happen. So kudos to all of them. And just their response. So you've heard about interventions. You've heard about things going on in schools. A lot of that has been in response to us challenging them and saying, look, you know, we changed from a five-day to a four-day mid-year pretty unprecedented. We are trying to move into four-day for next year. We have challenges with gaps from pandemic loss. We have a number of issues that we're dealing with. But the challenge has been thrown down and they are working to meet that. And again, that's another tip of the hat to that group of people because they are responding and with the urgency that is required because you don't have a minute to spare. Our kids are owed that much. Thank you. I appreciate your time to see. Look forward to this a little earlier in the year.
I know all of you are saying that a lot of these were just bits and pieces on all this data and everything that you gave us, Mr. Parr. But I mean, I'm seeing some pretty phenomenal stuff here, I think. I'm hearing some really phenomenal stuff.
It's a testament.
It's really great.
Place in the building, that's for sure.
All right, board requests and reports.
I have stuff to say. Does Stacy want to finish her castle?
I don't even remember where. We were talking about co-op. That's really not anything that we have on the Western slope. Oh, I know where I was going with that. When you co-op, it's beneficiary to the Eastern slope people because those schools are close together and they're really small enrollment. And when you co-op, you have to take both schools enrollment. And then, you know, so if we were to co-op with Dolores for girls' golf, then we would be, that would probably put us into a 5A bracket where we just choose to have the golf program and Dolores chooses not to have it. And those kids can come to Cortez and we can still stay a 3A program. That's the one reason that you don't want to co-op or you have to be very careful with co-opping and then just sharing those programs with the other schools. I know at times we've had, when we've, it was cross-country several years ago. We ended up only taking one student to the state cross-country meet. And it happened to be a Dolores student. But Dolores kicked in and helped with half the expenses because it was their student. So I think our schools work well together to do those kinds of things. But Chassa, like everyone else, is going to start trying to be innovative in what they do and how they make things happen because of expenses. And the numbers of kids who are participating in sports and activities are coming down for some reason. That's a sad thing that, just my personal opinion is, I feel like the interscholastic sports are going to be a thing of the past in the next 10 years. It's going to all come down to club athletics, which is sad.
You keep a strong voice for wolves.
Some other stuff on that rural roundtable that we had today, too. They did a presentation on the Rural Gift and Program that was really good.
Put that on here.
They did talk a lot about finance. And I can tell you, we are probably the only district anywhere that's done a pay raise. Every one of them said that the only thing they're doing is maybe a bonus or something like that. They didn't all want to obligate their district to a long-term. So they were pretty impressed that we have that in for this year. So teacher housing was talked about a lot. That was pretty interesting. It was really good topics. This was the first one of these I've sat in on. And there's some really good topics. They talked a lot about teacher housing and issues with that and stuff.
And I think in there that our superintendent was going to visit with the city about maybe getting some reduced apartments and stuff.
Absolutely.
Most all of the districts that were on there today, I think there were 17 different people on there today. So most all of them had an issue with declining enrollment, except for Steamboat Springs. I was the only one that said they were actually, the level are rising. And then we had a bunch of discussion about Chassa. That was pretty much it. It was a good, it was a good one-hour deal.
Well, and then the initial 63.
Oh, yeah.
Which is, they're going to be sending out petitions together, signatures. They need 124,000 by August 8. And that is to take one-third of 1% of our sales tax off of taper. And if we get it, if it passes, it's targeted for teachers for retention and salaries. And then I was on a legislative and I have already missed Mr. Burris about this. House bill 221358 is clean water in schools. That will be where you are required to put in a filter system on every drinkable water. So in the restroom, where you wash your hands, it has to be filtered because you don't know who's going to be drinking out of it. So we'll have to be doing that.
Hear that, right?
I will tell you that Chassa is saying you need to amend this bill because districts cannot afford it. Let me see. I'm trying to hit just the high points. That basically, science does most of it without going into great detail.
Can I have one more second?
Yeah, you can.
So Kyle and I have been meeting with the city because years ago, there was an agreement done between city and the school district to allow the city to use our facilities. One of the things we talked about last week, the week before when we saw them, I do things fast, so we're busy. So one of the things we talked about is it came up in my five-card thing is about wellness programs. And so we've asked them about a reduced rate at the rec center, and they're going to do that. So when that comes to fruition, I'll bring that and, you know, want people to get into that. But that's another thing that Kyle and I are doing. Stay busy. Thank you.
Nice, that's good to hear. Anybody else before we move to citizens, address the board? Okay, citizens, address the board. MB McAfee.
Okay, board. Good evening. You sure have a lot to do and you have a lot to celebrate with the reports that you've had tonight. I think there's some really great things that I heard. So I have two things that I wanted to say off the grid. Just, I also, as a citizen, I want to recognize the good work of the teachers and the fact that they got a pay raise. I think that's really great. As I understand it, entry-level teachers now at least make a livable wage. And one of your stated goals is not only to recruit teachers, which that livable wage for new teachers can do, but it's to retain teachers. So it's my hope that down the road, and I'm not. but it's to retain teachers. So it's my hope that down the road, and I'm not familiar with your financing while you're doing this for sure, but my hope is down the road, teachers who have been here for a while that you'd like to retain, like those five or so that are at the junior high school, get a similar sort of pay raise. There was an imbalance kind of thing when I read about it. So hopefully that can be addressed. The other thing I want to talk about, which I wouldn't come up here all mad and stormy and talk about it all mad and stormy, but instead I'll just try to be gentle like. There's a policy tonight that you're going to look at. It's the next to the last one, I think, BGE. Only I think now it's GBE that got changed. It has to do with staff participation in political activity. And I've been meeting with had a meeting with Mr. Burris about this last night. So the policy that's in your packet is something I found online in five minutes. It's the same policy that Lakeland, New York, in Shrub Oak, New York, Lakeland District in New York has. The very same policy, word for word for word. So I hope you do not pay Mr. Miller, your attorney, any more than about 10 bucks because you apparently wanted a policy that had to do with staff participation in political activities. And either he's an attorney for that district and our district, and he wrote up two paragraphs. I don't know how that came about. Nevertheless, the policy that's in your packet is nothing more than stifling teachers. So my hope is, and I know it's first reading tonight, I have had that. Thank you, Mr. Burris, for helping me understand that. On more than one occasion, I'm a bit of a deaf learner. So it's the first reading tonight. I hope that policy goes out, goes away, and I can tell you that the policy about actually the actual policy about staff participating in political activity, that's like staff who decides to run for office or support ballot measures or whatever, has nothing to do with this specific senior policy. You can find that policy in Roxwell, New Mexico.
Roswell.
Roswell, New Mexico. So I might bring that to you somewhere along the line. Thank you.
Thank you, MB. Okay, Catherine Foster.
Hello. Thank you for your attention. Before I get to the substance of my comments, I want to say to you guys again that the performance at the high school, Mary Poppins, was spectacular. I saw it the last day. I know they were dead tired. It was still amazing. Also, on behalf of the Board of Southwest Colorado Concerts, I want to say how much we deeply appreciate your continued support to what Southwest Colorado Concerts does and allowing our access to the high school. And I also want to thank all of the people that are in the theater department that typically provide tech support for those performances. They're outstanding also. Now, the substance of what I want to say is also about the staff participation in political activities. And quite frankly, I have questions. The sentence about the board may control the content of speech, even if it's if it significantly threatens the efficient operations of the school or if it conflicts with the educational miss mission of the district. Entirely uncertain what that means. It seems very broad. And I'm kind of curious how it would affect things like a discussion of current events, you know, in civics class or social studies curriculum, that it does seem like it would hinder the ability of a of a teacher to do anything more than ask community questions. The second part of it is the board can restrict their comments to the curriculum and the staff shall not express through words or any other form messages that are not related to the curriculum. So I have a couple of questions about that. How does that relate to having political bumper stickers on your car in the parking lot? I mean, can that can that statement of what the board can do be expanded to apply to those kinds of activities? And would it also then apply to activities of staff on social media, which, you know, is pervasive and pretty easy to get at? So I do have concerns about what that does to stifle the free discussion of what's going on in our world among students and staff, and also, I think, exposes staff to unseen interpretations, the way this is written. And that's the end of my comments.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mike Levy.
Evening, board, person, superintendent. Principals, teachers, public, thank you for being here tonight. Thank you for giving me the opportunity. My name is Mike Levy. I'm the mayor of Cortez. And I just wanted to express my sincere appreciation to the teachers for the tough year they've had last couple of years. It's been tough for the principals, tough for the students. And I just want to give them all the encouragement and praise them for the resilience and dedication that they've exhibited for these last couple of years. That's all I wanted to say. Thank you, teachers, students, principals, staff, community.
Thank you for that. Okay. Adrian Thomas.
All right. Good evening. I am here because I'm a little concerned about the letting go of the Menon principal, Ms. Rapp. I have two boys at Menon. And to be honest with you, when I first learned a few years ago that my kids were going to be sent to Menon, and as I was talking to community members about what schools are good in there, because I'm not from around here, any conversation that came up as, oh, yeah, they're going to be going to Menon, I would get the look. Oh, I'm sorry about that. Because it seems like Menon has more challenge more challenges than maybe some of the other schools, is what I've gathered. However, a couple of years later, as I'm getting ready to enroll and I'm talking to community members about, gosh, I go to Menosha and I go to Menon. The the atmosphere around Menon had changed. And it was now, hey, Menon is not so bad. They're doing really well. You might be, you know, it's okay. They have a great principal. She's only been there a few years. Her name is Ms. Whitney Rapp. And she's really doing good things. Their test scores are improving. The atmosphere is improving. There's teachers who want to stick around. And so I was very encouraged by that and a little confident sending them to Menon. And I think looking at, I I got on the website. I've seen that their test scores have improved. I can tell you from experience, she's been great with our kids. She's been great to work with from a parent perspective. She's worked hard and I know that staff retention is a big thing. So when you have somebody who wants to be in Cortez, who is really pouring themselves into the students, to the teachers, and then we let them go with six weeks of school left, I feel like that looks very poorly. It doesn't it doesn't settle right. I can tell you as a parent that something's wrong. So I just wanted to express my concern about that. I do think retention is a big thing and to have two big administrators turnover within the semester is that's a little disconcerting from a community perspective. So I wanted to say I I think Whitney was great. Ms. Rapp was great. My little one, he been sent as for his birthday party, he said, as he was handing out invitations, he goes, Mom, I saved this one for tomorrow. I go, who's that one for? Because I want to give it to Ms. Rapp, my principal. I think that says a lot about her. And I'm, again, I'm a little disappointed to see maybe how the situation was handled, even though I don't have all the details. That's what happened. So, thank you.
Sarah Collins.
Hi, good evening. I'm here tonight to talk about accountability. And as far as what you guys have thought about hiring these intern people into these positions and the changes that they're making, who's going to be held accountable for these things that they're changing that are not good changes for people such as my child, who's an IEP special skills student at Menon? I want to know who's going to be held accountable whenever I hear things that Mr. Burris has instructed his new principal to call the police on children that have IEPs that are not able to self-soothe. I also have been told that there's a special ed teacher at Menon that is not licensed. These things are concerning to me because I also have settlement agreements with this district. And as my mom has always told me, ignorance of the law is not an excuse. And I have written and wrote to Ms. Hall, Mr. Burris, about the issue that happened on Thursday with my son. And I was very upset at the way that it was handled because it was not part of what we had agreed upon, that things were going to be handled with him. Nor is what has happened since then made me a very happy parent. He was very secure at Menon. He was being handled with things that had happened before due to discrepancies happening during COVID in his curriculum. So I was happy that Whitney and Ms. Calhoun were fixing those things and we were a team. Unfortunately, Robin has never been part of that team. She has never been to any of his meetings. She was not part of the mitigations that we had. And now she's in charge. And I hear these things about my son that are unsettling. But we, as a team with Bosse's, were working with that. And I do not see Robin as being part of that team. And my son has expressed that she is not very nice to him. He is very limited in verbiability. And that is what he has expressed to me. I have kept him out of school all week because Ms. Robin or Ms. Robin is not up to date on how his crisis protocol is supposed to be handled. And I don't need any more damage done to him. That's already been done. So I'm sitting here wondering who's going to be accountable if something happens to my son, such as the police being called on him. He is a 10-year-old child in fifth grade. I want to know what the outcome of this is going to be. These intern people are not going to cut it. You guys need permanent people in these in these spaces. And I know I was on the superintendent panel. I never got an email back as to what where I was supposed to go, who I was supposed to meet with. I got no communication back from that. So the communication also needs to be fixed, Mr. Strick.
Thank you. Janet and me and Hope.
All right. Thank you, teachers. All the wonderful things. Okay, so I want to speak to you all about a couple of things. The reading of the employee DGE, Staff Participation in Politics. I have some questions. What has happened that has made these changes necessary? Do we really want and or need the school board to micromanage what teachers can say and post in their classrooms? Isn't this sending a message to teachers that we don't trust them? I'm really disappointed in our school board. Tonight, you all will be reading, doing the first reading of several policies for teachers and students, but not on you all. In my opinion, these policies are designed to take away the rights of students and teachers to be individuals and how the board decides what is political and what is not. Is a flag pin, hat, t-shirt, bumper sticker on your car political? A punisher, please thin blue line hat, flag, t-shirt, sticker political? How about a cross? How about having a Bible in school? How about the Star of David? How are these different from rainbow pins? How about asking your teacher to please use your pronouns or your correct name? Since this is by law required by teachers, regardless of their beliefs. It seems to me that you're asking teachers and students to be robots. They are not, and it is in your place to propose policies that strip them of their First Amendment rights. What it what does it seem that these policies only affect teachers and don't apply equally to school board members? There's not one mention of school board members having to comply with these restrictions on their First Amendment rights. Personally, my wish is that the school teaches diversity, individualism, how to think, not what to think. I know most of you claim to be nonpartisan. We all know this is not the case. So sharing noise and sharing rights, I recall petition of Lance McDaniel. That was nothing if not politically motivated and unethical. Another example, Stacy Alde mail response to one of the parents. She responded, the way I choose to vote in Mammoth County School District is for what I feel is best for students and staff. I appreciate and I listen. I appreciate listening and to the community's input in all matters, but I will always vote for what I feel is best. The key to understanding her statement is her use of but instead of and. It explained that her personal feelings are the basis for decision-making and votes. A former writing teacher explained that but is the most negative word. It nullifies everything said before to avoid using it in speaking and writing. And to be careful to listen to what people say. This is one way. People conceal the truth with forked tongue. We are listening very carefully, Stacy. Another example is the board's communications with each other. Brought to light by the open records request, we had excellent ethical, competent superintendent and Dr. Risha Vanderwein. She was chosen by a panel of parents, community members, and by all of you on the school board. However, because some of you can't separate your political religious beliefs from your roles in the school board, we no longer have her.
Is Anne going to speak? Well, thanks for coming, man at work.
I'm going to set up a little different tonight because I've done some research and I found out something I didn't know myself. Do you know that Dolores alone has 70 of our upper grade children, 40 of which is middle school students? We're all grant motivated. But if you sit down and do some figures, we are losing out to just Dolores alone, not counting Shiprock, not counting Dove Creek, Mankas, or any of those. We are out $6,205,000 or $500,000. Dolores is taking our children and our teachers. I've been told this does not pertain or apply to our district, but it does. We're losing a lot of money and we're losing valuable teachers and resources. We need to drop the scenario with the powerful partners, partnerships and all of that and get our children and our active parents back to our district. We wouldn't have to rely on so many government regulated grants if we had our children back, if our children had academics, curriculum, school colors, everything that Dolores has. I want for our school, because it's been so long since I've tried to explain this, I want for our school what Dolores has. The children are happy. I was so ecstatic when I walked out of that school the other day. I could not believe the differences. I was welcomed in as a parent, not as somebody visiting in a prison. The kids were happy. They were running and communicating with the principal, with the teacher. They were decorating the walls in neutral, beautiful artwork of their own that came from their hearts, not from what was programmed into them. And like I said, our school is losing over a half a million dollars per year just on attendance alone. And I'm pretty sure that some of us, the administration office, knows what Dolores has got. I want my daughter to academically succeed. I want her to be a success. I want her to know what her academics are, her pronouns. I want her to know what her academics are, her pronouns, all of that. I want to see a pronoun in her writing when she writes a novel. I want to be able to see her succeed in math. Politics, sexuality has no place in the classrooms at all.
Do we have anybody else that wanted to address the board? We would like to reconvene back into our regular meeting after a short break. It is now 9:03. Okay. No discussion items at this point. We are moving on to action items. Do we have a motion to untable?
Just let me talk about the CASB policy review before we even untable it.
Okay.
Because I'd like to leave it there.
Okay.
So what I'm talking to CASB about is how they would implement and then how we would have to basically vacate our entire policy manual and then adopt the new one. And it takes two meetings to adopt. So I think if we leave the table this time and the other issue, Kyle, the other issue is when we pay for this. So we've got to coordinate all of that so that we pay for it after July, but we start the process in June of getting rid of all of our policies and do first reading because we won't have policies then we would have it at second reading. So I would like to leave this as a tabled item so we can come back to it when I figure out exactly what that timeline is.
Do I hear a motion to leave CASB policy review tabled? Okay. All right. Motion to approve the consent.
President, I recommend that we approve the consent calendar as listed in your board packet with all the new hires and positions.
I move.
Okay.
Frazier?
Aye.
Hall?
Aye.
Hart?
Aye.
Noise?
Aye.
Rice?
Aye.
Wells?
Aye.
Wright?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay. Resolution for appointment of superintendent for 2022, 2023.
Madam President, I recommend that you consider the resolution for appointment of the superintendent for 2022, 2023.
I move to have the superintendent position remain open.
Say what?
I second it.
Second. I move to have the superintendent position remain open.
Who's second?
Have the superintendent position remain open.
Remain open.
Yes, sorry.
Who was our second?
I did.
Well, Ed and I kind of did.
Whatever. That's fine.
Frazier?
Aye.
Hall?
We're going to have a discussion.
Yeah, do you want to have a discussion?
We have a discussion.
Okay.
Go ahead.
I felt like Mr. Prop is very personable. But I just was concerned about the size of our district and his experience. I just didn't feel like his experience was a good fit with our district. So I agree with what Cody said is that I just, I move that we keep it open.
And I feel the same. Liked him. Personable, but I just did not feel like he was the person to take our district. So. And we had nine applicants for the position, only one interview. I feel like we need to get a little more in, so.
I agree with Ed with that statement.
And I would say a lot of our positives and, or the pros and cons aligned a lot with the community group as well. So taking that into consideration, I will agree that we need to position open.
I feel this is a pretty interesting district to come into. I think we're, you know, we'd be much better served if we just wait and, you know, do the process, you know, as well as we can, starting maybe next January, December, somewhere in there. And we're going to really need someone who can really take on this position. And, you know, I think, you know, I think he was a great guy, liked him, but I don't think he's going to be a good fit for what we're.
All right. I think whenever you're ready, Deb.
Okay, I'm not hearing you say call for a question.
Oh, no, that's okay. No, no, you're fine. You are still writing.
All right, Frazier?
Aye.
Hall?
Aye.
Hart?
Aye.
Noise?
Aye.
Rice?
Aye.
Wells?
Aye.
Wright?
Aye.
Thank you.
We have our board and superintendent covenants.
In your board packet, you will find the covenants as we amended them. I've amended a few things, just typo things. And if it's approved, then we move forward and do the booklet type thing and get that out to all the schools so that the schools know what our priorities are and how we work with each other.
Do I hear a motion to?
I move that we accept the board superintendent covenant.
Second.
Yeah. Yeah, I think you had all the changes that I had submitted and I would agree with moving forward with this.
This isn't the final draft though, right? Because there's, I do see a few typos that were dealt.
If you do, let me know. I can catch them all and we can put them in. Just typos that don't change anything are okay to change.
I hear you.
All right.
For instance, United is just not untied.
We are untied.
We have a period of combo there.
Okay.
And you're not capitalizing things else you need to.
Got it. Give those to me. Again, typos are, we can fix that before it goes out. So we look good.
Good, perfect.
Thank you.
Debra, do you want to call for the question?
Thank you. Frazier?
Aye.
Hall?
Aye.
Hart?
Aye.
Noise?
Aye.
Rice?
Aye.
Wells?
Aye.
Wright?
Aye.
Do I hear a motion to move our May 17th meeting to May 16th due to some of the activities that are going on in the district?
Let me look at my calendar. I think it was okay for me, but. Happy for yourself to attend the graduation ceremony for different parts of the year. Mr. Chandler, is that the seventh awards night?
The awards night.
But I need a motion, so. So I move that we move our meeting from the 17th to the 16th.
I second that.
Okay, yeah, we've got a pretty busy week. I know we have the grad walks that Monday, so we'll be able to have our meeting that night, the awards and then back laureate and then graduation. So we're a pretty busy week, so. Throw in a board meeting on Monday is the best plan, I think, so. Okay. Deborah, you can call for the question.
Frazier? Hall?
Aye.
Hart?
Aye.
Noise?
Rice?
Aye.
Wells?
Aye.
Wright?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, a motion to approve our, the school board meeting calendar for 2022, 2023.
Madam President, I recommend that we approve the calendar as required by law for 2022, 2023.
I move to set the school board meeting calendar from 2022 to 2023.
Ed? I'd second you.
President? I put this together with one thing in mind. We had a complaint this year that not every single board meeting fell on the third Tuesday of the month. I think it was February where there was an error. It was already on the calendar, so we just went through the motions. That next year with this situation we just approved in mind, I think I pre-planned for that. So that May we will not hit the third Tuesday either, maybe. March, we won't bother. Oh, March. Oh, March. That's my, sorry. I didn't think about why I did it. March will hit that situation again because of where spring break falls this year. So I did set this up to have an earlier meeting than, I'm sorry, it's usually the fourth Tuesday. And I've set March up to be the third Tuesday.
Do you mean the fourth Tuesday? I think opposite is what you're.
Oh, well, strike that reverse.
Yeah.
It's very late.
Okay.
And then also, do we want to pre-plan for next year on the awards night thing? Because I don't think the date will change for high school.
The high schools want to be the 25th for graduation. Is that what you're talking about?
She's main movement.
Because the awards night.
But they graduate a week later, right?
Yeah.
Okay, so it won't be a problem, too. I just wanted to make sure you're aware of those differences.
Are we going to have a meeting in June?
For next year?
For next year, yeah.
Because the regulation next year will be on the 25th.
So the 25th, isn't it?
That's the last day.
Yeah.
This says graduation on the 25th.
I think there must be a school.
There's a trend on that day of schools, August 15th and May 25th.
I'm looking at the old one. There's an old one and a new one in here. So I'm really looking at the new ones. This is high school graduation is May 25th.
Do we have a copy of the actual calendar that we approved it was?
Yeah, I can do the old ones.
I've got the 21, 22.
I like to be.
Yeah. I do. I have 21, it's 23. 23, 23. And I have two.
Is that the regular school calendar?
This is our.
Or is that the board calendar?
Meeting.
Yeah, that's not, I was looking for those. That's what I thought.
I mean, I'm not saying, that might be incorrect, but that's what.
If that's the case, then this is a no.
The last day is the 25th? So you've got the rest on here. Is that correct?
And then.
Because don't you need those hours for the seniors, right? They can't graduate on the 15th.
John even has the current calendar.
25th, right? Yeah. Got that. May of 23.
So May 25th is what we have for graduation day?
Yeah, it's on the calendar. It's posted on the website.
Okay, all right.
Okay. Okay. Okay, just call for the question.
Okay, Frazier?
Aye.
Hall?
Aye.
Hart?
Aye.
Noise?
Aye.
Rice?
Aye.
Wells?
Aye.
Wright?
Aye.
Couple of reserve requests. MCMS concession wall for $13,000. I have a motion to. Can that be read?
Will you read it?
Go ahead.
All right, they have a quest April 12th, 2022. Funds available at $180,667. Account is the Caporals or projects account. It is $13,000. To update CMS concession area for safety of public and staff identified as a need assessment, health and safety. Business office confirmed funds are available and the project was coordinated maintenance, IT departments. Whereas the administration has a need in additional $13,000 to purchase a CMS concession wall. Now therefore be resolved, $13,000 is authorized for expenditure from the Caporals or fund.
Madam President, I make a recommendation that we approve the construction of the wall at CMS.
Your motion?
I make a motion to accept this. Second. So what is the concession wall that we're talking about? Is it in the middle?
That's what I was asking.
It's in the middle school. And if you're, I'm not sure if you're familiar with where the concessions are usually housed, right outside of the gym area. It's kind of connected to the home. So there's one big space there. And the issue right now is, one, there's no storage for these activities or groups to have their concession items and then be able to push them out to everyone else. Another is a concern for referees and maybe away teams that come. There's no room or area for them to come into to actually put their stuff because it's all in one room, open access to everyone going in and out of there. The reason it's probably a little more than what it would be in any other circumstances because right where the wall is, there are some fire sprinklers that run right in the middle of that room. Has to be adjusted and what to do with. However, I think it's definitely ill-doing beneficial to local school and then obviously activity. However, I think it's definitely it'll be beneficial to local school and then obviously activity. We will add.
Yeah, this is kind of been a few things. So we we actually over the past few years have been able to have a trainer. And so we have to get a location trainer, which means that our officials, they're just throwing their bags and stuff off to the side. So we need a space for that and for some storage and then. That's kind of like, we don't have a refrigerator down there. We don't have anything. So to be able to actually run concessions, it would be really nice to have something where we could. Have a countertop and actually have a hot dog roll or a refrigerator and those kind of things because that's the stuff just gets right out. And it's in one bigger room that people that come in and out all the time. So it would just make it really nice for our concessions to be able to raise funds for our, you know, activities and also to provide that additional space for.
I'm sure your officials would appreciate that to be able to have the space for their stuff.
So this can be completed by our maintenance guys or just contract it out?
We're we're gonna do it ourselves. Um, well, there's some permitting stuff that we have to work with the state on, but.
That is correct. Yeah, a lot of it can be the electrical side of it's kind of on the high side due to the fact that we're gonna. Additional power in there for any type of truck pods or whatever you're gonna do for a concession because. Because right now there's not enough power. We're basically running it on the surface of the walls. Power source should have some different tripping breakers. So that's kind of one of the expenses.
More questions or concerns or comments? Deb, you can call for the question.
Frazer.
Aye.
Paul.
Aye.
Hart.
Aye.
Noise.
Aye.
Rice.
Aye.
Wells.
Aye.
Wright.
Aye.
Okay, cap reserve request Panther Stadium track completion. One thousand, one hundred and thirty thousand, two hundred and thirty-five dollars.
All right, so they've requests. Twenty-two funds available, a hundred eighty thousand, six hundred sixty-seven dollars. Uh, the account is our capital projects account. Amount requested one hundred and thirty thousand, two hundred and thirty-five dollars. Project description stadium track. Impermeable structure spray identified as a need assessment health and safety. No permits required. Uh, business office confirmation funds are available. Project coordinated maintenance. Whereas the administration has needed an additional hundred thirty thousand, two hundred and thirty-five dollars to purchase a stack stadium track completion. Now therefore be resolved at a hundred thirty thousand, two hundred and thirty-five dollars authorized for the expenditure from the capital reserve fund.
Madam President, I recommend that. We approve the Panther Stadium track completion in the the amount of hundred and thirty thousand, two hundred and thirty-five dollars.
Thank you.
I said it's still moving.
Second. Is that you, Sherry?
Okay, is this the one that's going to move the water off the track and not be. Is that correct? And it's gonna be black?
Correct. Yeah, so the only difference, the first two, it's without that separation, that water barrier. The lower of the two is black, the higher of the two is red. So then you go to the other two options. Again, the number three option is what we're going with, the impermeable structure spray black. The option four, red, the reasoning they they even offer that is because when you make it black. And it starts to wear, you can't tell that it's wearing because it's all black. Now, if you get red and it starts to wear, once it runs through that red part, it becomes black and you know it's time. To to maybe replace or do something different. We talked together with the AD and Ray and and some other people and I think we came to the conclusion that we don't need to spend that additional money.
Yeah.
To make it red. So we decided to recommend option three.
Okay.
And then also when there's a letter from the vendor explaining kind of what took place prior, what.
What's the timeline on this?
So if we can, if if the board approves this, we can contact the vendor tomorrow. And from what I understand, it could probably be done over the summer. Now, a specific date over the summer, I don't know because we were waiting to give him so we could get his, I guess, in his books. I don't know. Fitzgerald says, do you have any more information on that?
Um, just a quick call. They did mention the repair prior to that. So once they get here, they're gonna more than that, more than I just mentioned.
They will.
Get it all once. Um, I'm gonna push for the summer because the last time it happened was more towards during the school year, August, September, October.
Right.
And they're aware of it. They're just waiting for a quick call. And I think a little bit of pressure on them will get them to appear a little bit sooner because we do have a warranty part of it aside. And I hope that we can stress to them a little bit harder that we get that then and cause the. Maybe it'll work out well, right?
But it's safer track this year.
Yes.
Yes. Essentially, it'd be good for about another year, but then if we wait that long and we use the warranty and we lose the foundation, we would have to start from scratch.
So it's a risk factor right now as far as if we don't, we're gonna have issues next year. And we do have a five-year warranty on it, but then again, the wear and tear, if we're not putting the top spray on later on affects that a little bit. So then it'd be more.
But this will extend our warranty.
Correct. We've got two years on it now, nineteen. Now November will be three years. But they're gonna extend it another five on top of that where we have a total eight on it.
Okay.
And normally if it does, if it's correctly, you manage to ride around seven hundred and fifty dollars now, basically here in three or four years to get it redone again. But approximately every five years, it has to be looked at and possibly redone on the top section. And that's aware.
In the lifetime, once you get everything on it and done, it's typically fifteen to twenty years ready for maintaining it through that process.
And that's an asphalt we gotta worry about on the bottom.
But you have to care the whole thing up to the asphalt.
Yes, the asphalt is over fifteen, twenty, twenty-five years and start showing cracks because it shrinks. And of course, you're talking. High heat, dry temperatures. Causes a lot of that. We're in this area that's really, the temperature fluctuates so much that that's why. We want to go with this top expensive side of it. So we've been managing more of the water flow up instead of going down and start separating with the hot and cold days that happen so quickly. And that causes a lot of separation.
Now, that one sixty-foot section, it it's in bad shape.
Correct. That's on the finish line.
Yes.
Right in that area. And I think they kind of stretch their materials out towards the end. He said no, but at the time, whenever they were doing the job, looking at what they had and how they was going through, it looked like it was kind of getting a little bit thin.
Yeah.
I mean, it's it's a half-inch thick material, but I think there it wasn't really, to be honest, a bit long and tight. Uh, on that section. From what I could tell, but looking at kind of monitoring turn of what they were doing, like that's why they had those. Well, I think the reason we're price-wise, the last thing would be of course, low prices in that term.
Sure.
Right now.
Call for the question.
Frazer.
Aye.
Paul.
Aye.
Hart.
Aye.
Noise.
Aye.
Rice.
Aye.
Wells.
Aye.
Wright.
Aye.
Okay, um, action item G donations, um, an MCHS thirty-five millimeter camera for a hundred and fifty dollars.
Drew, would you like to say anything about that, the cameras?
Oh.
I think we still have a couple.
High school.
Oh, crap.
We still have a couple supplemental budget things we have to do with.
Right?
Those are bad.
Oh, those are. Oh, oh.
Good or? Did I miss something?
No.
I did?
No.
Okay.
Essentially, it's. Cameras are donated in high school. Anything over a hundred dollars, I told you that I told you, just to make sure you're aware. And just a heads up, they were donated another. Group of supplies for photography, camera supplies and that. I didn't get it till last week, so it'll be on next month's report.
I recommend we approve the donation of the cameras for the high school at a hundred and fifty dollars.
Salute.
Second.
Okay.
Who was the first?
Ed. You can just call for the question.
Frazer.
Aye.
Paul.
Aye.
Hart.
Aye.
Noise.
Aye.
Rice.
Aye.
Wells.
Aye.
Wright.
Aye, thank you.
All right, Nikki. Okay, um, donation, um, item B, uh, Manal Lore Foundation donation for playground in the amount of twenty-five thousand dollars.
All right, so, um, the Lore Foundation donated or will donate twenty-five thousand dollars to contribute to. The Manal Playground remodel project. Essentially, right now, we have a GoCo grant that was extended that for a hundred and ten thousand dollars. We're in a spot right now where we need to find someone to project lead this because there's a lot of moving pieces. And we need this person to probably search for additional funding. Um, the money that we have to do that. Might put grass over there, but it's not gonna it to to rip up that asphalt and to put playground equipment equivalent to CMS and Lewis. We need like four or five hundred thousand more dollars. So, um, again, although this is a nice contribution to the overall, we. What's hindering us are those two things, someone to to wrap this project together and really drive it and then. Funding it to completion. Um, because right now the plan is to do as much as we can with the money we have. But I fear that it's it's just gonna get us to a spot where we don't have any equipment. So, um, that's that's kind of where we're at there.
So do you recommend that we accept it and hope that we find the money or?
Well, essentially, I mean, I don't. It's a good question because we could accept this money. Get down the line and then what happens if we're there next year and we figure out that we can't find additional money to do it?
This will go away even if we accept it by May thirty-third.
Exactly, but the problem is if we accept it and we start spending money and we don't complete the project, technically, we would need to give this back.
I say we get those parents, but Jim had the got all that money.
The expensive part is ripping up the asphalt, isn't it? And disposal.
And and there's rumors around that there's certain people that would help us out to do these things that again, there's nothing, there's no project person actually reaching out, making sure this is implemented on paper. Give us a timeline of project scope, what it's gonna look like. Lots of moving pieces. And and I I mean, I don't mean to plead it that worst, but when CMS and Lewis. Got their pieces of equipment, the district practically did nothing. They did everything and showed up, installed it, everything. So this is a little bit different because it's on us, the way it's written up today, so.
We have till May thirty-first, so we could table it until our main meeting to see where we stand then.
See if we can find a project manager for it, maybe somebody that'll donate that time or whatever. Okay.
Can I answer?
Yes, please.
Some of the questions that have. So, um, in the scope of. With, sorry, stand up. Sorry, everybody's seeing me. I'm behind the podium. I'm sorry about that. Thank you, board. Um. The scope of what we looked at, um, initially in talking to Principal Rapp when this kind of started was that it looked like a kind of a three-phase project. And understanding that the money was funded from GoCo prior to COVID. As we've heard over and over and over again, things are more expensive and stuff and. And as as I looked at it as a community member, GoCo brought in, I mean, they were able to bring in a hundred and ten thousand dollars to our community. And it would be sad to have to send it back. So if there's an opportunity for us to help to. Complete phase one, to help find, you know, somebody to project manage things like that for us when it comes to the funding. It wouldn't be about getting all the way to that finish line. It's about that first base for us. So that paying back or something like that, that we're not looking at the three-year goal or whatever. We're just looking at that initial start, which I think was like a walking track and taking out that asphalt and some park benches and stuff. Use, but I'm not saying you need to disprove it today. I'm just giving you something to take home and think about as well.
So it doesn't have to be completed. If we take the money, you're not expecting us to have a completed project at the end.
That phase one, the the GoCo money, yes, phase one is what what are anticipated. Funding would go for.
And we still have, we have those phones, the GoCo funds still are available?
It's reimbursable and the board's already proved it. So we have funding set aside that the district said, okay, we'll pay it because we have to pay upfront and then get the money back. So that's been approved, approved, I think, last year.
I think we need to table it. Think about it.
I would say one thing that we could potentially do is connect with the Colorado Health Foundation that did the grant or the playgrounds at Lewis and Pleasant View. You know, part of, part of what we did with them required, um, in-kind donations as well. Um, they could look at what we already have available and potentially, um, be a partner in that. I don't, it's not a guarantee, but I think it would be worth our time probably to reach out to that group and see. If there was something we could do in that regard. And we, at Lewis, we didn't have nearly, you know, we didn't have a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars to start the project. I think our PTO had ten. And and we walked away with a pretty, pretty nice setup, I would say, so. But yes, I will do that.
Community support and stuff, even though we're grant funded because.
We don't have those contacts, so I will do so.
Very good.
So I move.
Bring it back.
I move that we table this to our next meeting, which is May. Sixty-two.
And and I'm happy to attend the work session if there's more discussion that needs to happen in May. I I I'm happy to do that as well, to answer any questions or whatever.
No, I just make it. We need a second for that table. Okay, um, the Kemper Lore Foundation donation for water fountains. Oh, gosh, yeah, let's call for the question. Sorry.
Frazer.
Aye.
Paul.
Aye.
Hart.
Aye.
Noise.
Aye.
Rice.
Aye.
Wells.
Aye.
Wright.
Aye.
After nine, you just skip that.
Sorry.
Okay, sorry about that. Okay, um, Kemper, um, the Lore Foundation donation for water fountains in the amount of eighteen hundred dollars.
So the more foundation, uh, submitted to contribute eighteen hundred dollars, uh, to install two water fountains near the fourth and fifth grade hallways in Kemper. Um, so my understanding, and correct me if I'm wrong here, we already have. The water fountain, they just need to be installed. So the eighteen hundred dollars will contribute to finding the plumber to make that happen. Um, the district's probably gonna have to incur some costs on the electrical side.
Oh, that's all right.
I don't know what those costs will be at this moment in time, but, um, that's where we're at.
Do we need, do we need those to satisfy ADA or?
Correct. What it is is, uh. Whenever that building was built, basically the drains were set too high. Whenever you add these bottled drinking bounds, everything has to be lower.
Right.
So the drains have to be dropped for prior to actually putting the drinking bound in the bottle filled. To make it the ADA.
Right.
Side of it. So, you know, I got a plumber in for K and 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 contacted them, a certified plumber. They could do the drain drop. On the line and also line the water line there for better housing. on the line and also line the water line there for this better housing of the drinking fountain.
Madam President, I recommend that we accept the donation of eighteen hundred dollars from the Lore Foundation for the installation of drinking fountains.
I move to accept installation.
I second. Will this have the ability to put the filters in and stuff?
They're filtered.
They will be filtered because I have a feeling that it's coming down to make this safe, that you have to have it for the spring water.
Everything we have right now that's auto-built is all filtered. I think the district, the high school, there they did that, that's filtered system for the drinking fountains. There's a few that aren't at the bottom, but there are at the high school. But yeah, everything's filtered, that we've been installing.
Save us money in the long run.
Correct.
Deb, you can call for the question. Fraser?
Hi.
Paul?
Aye.
Hart?
Aye.
Noise?
Aye.
Rice?
Aye.
Wells?
Aye.
Wright?
Aye.
Okay, action item H supplemental budget, um, HA, S R three, multiple technologies, tie items. See, we have a list, the amount of, um, one million, two hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars.
Right, so I'll read this supplemental budget request. Um, S R three, funding designated for twenty-one, twenty-two. Let me back up real quick. So S R three, the way the application is submitted is you have to, you have to designate funding for a separate school year, so the whole amount of the award is nine point seven million dollars. But the way we wrote the application, there are certain items that we wanted to be able to send money on now. And then the rest of it in twenty-two, twenty-three had to be separated. So I'm gonna ask for approval for S R three funding for this year. And then the budget that I present to you, I'll have the remainder of the S R three for next year that's designated there. So the grant summary, S R three provides funding to school districts to help sa- safely reopen and sustain the safe operation of schools and address the impacts of the coronavirus pandemic on our students. Um, revenue account, it's a federal source, so it'll be a twenty-two or two twenty-five fund. And then the expenditures, on this expenditure page I have it broken into three items. District supplies, educational technology, equipment for the district, and then the capital equipment. The total amount is one million, two hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars. The next page is a breakdown of those items, um, essentially round to the school, so I guess specifics. The way that you have to, uh, request funding to the state is if I wanna buy educational equipment for the high school and the elementary, it's separated by accounting code because secondary education is different than elementary education. So on the supplemental budget, it's all in one line, um, as educational equipment. But as you can see in the attachment, I have it broken down, um, by, you know, the high school and elementaries and everything and so on. Same thing with supplies and the capital equipment. The, the majority of what we're, what we have in the budget for this year is a lot of technology equipment for the classrooms. So projectors, document cameras, um, replacement projectors, things of that nature. Um, interactive whiteboards, smart boards, um, computer cards, computers for kids and staff, we have it written in for this year and next year. So it takes a little bit of the, the brunt off of the general fund for the next couple of years as far as technology replacements. Uh, there's even touchless water, filling stations, touchless faucets, auto plush toilets. Um, we were able to take a big piece of, of the grant and look at, I mean, items in our bathrooms and things that in the past maybe were, you had to touch it, open it. This grant allows us to not only upgrade, but make it touchless and so that it's more of a safety and health upgrade in that sense. Another piece is, uh, a lot of items for the food and nutrition department as far as like warming, handlers, um, point of sale software, so that we're not, um, I mean, everything's more electronic and touchless and things of that nature, so that if we were to get in a pandemic situation again, we wouldn't be in a position where we couldn't provide food. Right, like a couple summers ago, I know they really worked their bus off going to a couple schools, creating those meals and taking them out. This would just make that process ten times easier if we were to come to that situation again. And even if not, it makes us more efficient than the way we operate right now. I think really that's, that's a high level summary of most items we wanna purchase now. Cause if we can get it in the, in the budget now and start purchasing those items, we can get them before school starts next year. This was a, this was like writing a mini-budget for a school. I have to give a lot of props to Mr. Palmquist, he put a lot of time and energy into this to make sure that the money we're spending really falls in line with addressing learning loss and the requirements of the grant. So, any questions?
Good job. I recommend that we approve the S R three grant in the amount of one million, two hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars. Supplemental, excuse me.
I move that we accept this grant.
Second.
Um, I do have a question. This keyless entry system to all these buildings?
Yes.
Is that gonna be every single door?
So it's gonna be all the outside access doors. So it's not, it's not gonna be the inside hallways or something in it, but it's, if there's a way to get into a building, that's our intention. So anywhere from four to seven doors of building, something to that.
I, I know, I know a lot of those classrooms face a, the classroom goes straight to outside. So are those gonna be replaced as well?
Those doors would be included, cause the whole idea is the safety concern of not just allowing anybody in.
Okay.
And the other piece that serves us is right now, we have keys for everything. And if something happens to a master key or or anything of that nature, it becomes a big burden on our maintenance because they have to rekey everything and recreate keys. And if we move the system, it's a, it's a flip of a computer button, right? To, to take someone's key away or to rekey it or to do anything of that nature. So and then also, if someone gets into a building after hours, we have a log of who, when, when they went in there. Cause right now, I don't wanna say it's a free for all, but.
It is.
Deborah, you can call for the question. Fraser?
Hi.
Paul?
Aye.
Hart?
Aye.
Noise?
Aye.
Wells?
Aye.
Wright?
Aye.
Okay, um, supplemental budget, Southwest Open School Colorado Health Foundation mini-grant in the amount of nine thousand, nine hundred and thirty-seven dollars.
Right, so the Colorado Health Foundation mini-grant, um, it can be used as support programs and encourage access to participation in federal child nutrition programs. Essentially, this grant, um, Swos took it upon themselves to try and find ways to encourage kids and staff to to participate in their nutritional programs. Um, they get, they have a lot of at-risk kids, they have a lot of, um, kids that probably need this more than not, and so they get funding, but the problem is they're having trouble getting kids to actually participate. So what this does is gives them some money to put some programs together, maybe campaign a little bit to try and, and up that program to, to make sure that they're spending, they're getting to spend their federal dollars that they get for food and not just letting it go to waste. And then also educating their community on, on the importance. So this is a straight flow-through grant, uh, to Swos, it's a local revenue source um, in the amount of nine thousand, nine hundred and thirty-seven dollars. And the expenses just to flow through a hundred percent, nine thousand, nine hundred and thirty-seven dollars to Swos.
Madam President, I recommend the flow-through grant of nine thousand, nine hundred and thirty-seven dollars to Southwest Open School.
I second to, uh, accept this.
Second. All right. You can call for the question. Fraser?
Hi.
Paul?
Aye.
Hart?
Aye.
Noise?
Aye.
Rice?
Aye.
Wells?
Aye.
Wright?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, action item HC, the Colorado School of Public Health for seven hundred dollars.
Right, this is supplemental budget, Colorado School of Public Health. These are stipend money for schools that participated in the Healthy Kids Colorado Survey, no stipulation, no funds are spent. So, um, I, I realize that a few months ago, we had a pretty big conversation on this survey. This actually is money received as a survey that was taken in the hall by the high school and the Southwest Open School. So these were, this was already completed and it wasn't middle school, we didn't do it at the middle school. And essentially, I had a heck of a time trying to figure out how to make, how to account for this. So, uh, we received seven hundred dollars from the state. Out of that seven hundred, four hundred will go to Swos and three hundred will come to the district. For seven hundred dollars.
I recommend approval of the public health grant for seven hundred dollars.
I move to approve this, um, seven hundred dollars from the grant.
Well, can we not break it down again? Three hundred goes where?
Three hundred, um, is money the district got for the high school participation. And then four hundred goes to Swos for their participation.
Thank you for arguing for three hundred dollars.
Yeah.
Deborah, you can call for the question. Fraser?
Hi.
Paul?
Aye.
Hart?
Aye.
Noise?
Aye.
Rice?
Aye.
Wells?
Aye.
Wright?
Aye.
Okay, action items, I, policy revisions for the first reading.
First reading, we don't have to have a vote on or anything, the discussion. I would like to discuss just a moment, class size. Uh, Kyle and I worked a lot with class size. Then we presented it to the principals and the principals all agreed upon it. And, um, so what you have in the, in the class size policy is we're, we're pretty set on that. And we are, I asked the principal to share that with their faculty and see if there was any feedback. And if there is, by next time, I'll let you know. Other than that. If there's a substantial change to GVE for next month, I'll bring that to you. And it could be that we just, we call that a first reading again, and go back to it, so.
So are we talking about all these first?
Yeah, we can, any of them.
Alright, I'm gonna move that we accept, um, policies A, B, C, D, E, or I'm sorry. Items A, B, C, D, E, F, G, and H.
Do you have to vote on this?
No, because when you vote on it, it's going to be, it'll be policy then. So this is, first reading is just to read.
It's discussion, and we're just starting discussion now.
Yeah.
You went A through H on your motion?
Yeah, there's not a motion.
Don't need a private something on that.
So a couple of things as far as the class size that I was, uh, a little bit concerned with too.
Okay.
Um, I'm sure that there's gonna probably be some, expect English teachers especially, I saw some votes on those. And then the, I understand the eight student minimum. But there are situations, especially at the high school, well, I don't know about the middle school, but the high school for sure, that there are sequence classes that a student has to have to get onto the next sequence, basically.
Correct.
And if you don't have your eight in there, we can't sacrifice those students for.
Absolutely.
Analyze them for that.
And and we discussed that, you know, kinda like me when I was a math teacher. If I had an honors class, it might be small, but guess what my algebra one class looked like? It was huge. So, um, Eric and I actually talked about those classes. And we're not gonna sacrifice those kids because of the numbers. We're gonna make it work, but we, we need to work with our staff to say, you know, it works like this, but the other side of the coin looks like this. So, and we, we're not gonna get it, we're not gonna, we're not gonna have fifty kids in a math class, that doesn't work. There's some point in there that's still workable. But this gives us some guidelines to go by that are workable. And again, when Kyle had, Kyle and I worked on this, these numbers actually came from New Mexico statutes and also what Mankas is doing. And we're really close with both of those.
Sure.
And if you have, you know, in talking, Ed, if you have any feedback, certainly bring it next time and see what we have.
We think finally, um, last column. And, you know, this is what we've done created and combined APR three, BPR four into one class because there's four kids here, there's one guy, so those classes don't come out at the same time. Not ideal, but we also couldn't offer, you know, both classes separately. Not just because of the form, because of the number of sections we have. So we've kind of already been doing this, I don't think it would go ahead and affect it much over the last few years under the master schedule. So, um, yeah, we're aware that, obviously, with some, some of the CTE courses.
Yeah, especially like, yeah, your fourth, fourth year CTE classes, a lot of times you may not have enough in there, so.
And we've always just had to deal with that.
Didn't you and Kevin used to run those though, together with your third years classes?
Um, we've done some like, well, when we went into our, uh, more tracking type of students going in, like we'd offer an egg mechanics one and an egg mechanics two at the same time. So.
Okay.
You have two classes going on, but they're both egg mechanics. One's a second level class, one might be a third level class or whatever.
Certainly.
So.
And we wanna support that.
Yeah.
Nothing else on our agenda? I will adjourn this meeting at nine fifty-eight, before ten o'clock.
We almost did.